Move into item F, study session on the Local Control Accountability Plan. Perhaps if you'll introduce it and then we'll just reconvene or have Mr. Gibbs finish out his section, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, President Dice, members of the board. Just a few kind of prefatory comments, really coming into this whole process kind of at the last minute. But what I've learned about the LCAP and just the whole LCFF new funding model and the LCAP that comes with it is that everyone I've talked to, including people at State Department and people at our county office, are all saying the same thing, and that this is an evolving, developing, continuing, fluid process. And a number of people in those positions have also said, and we're not sure exactly how it's going to change, but we know it's going to change. So, you know, it's one of those not-so-common processes, concept. It's not, I've been in my 40 years through four or five major restructuring efforts that caused districts to have to respond to kind of a new state direction. And this is probably the first one that I've been part of, where in some ways, the refinement of this process is going on at the same time that districts are trying to comply with the statutory requirements. A perfect example of that was in a conversation with our county contact person today. I had the opportunity to go to a meeting of the State Department two weeks ago, at which time the comment was made, well, districts have to address all 23 priorities. I mean, although there are eight stated priorities, if you take each one and unpack each of those eight, when you add them all up, there's 23, unless you eliminate API because API will not be the same as it is before. So then there's 22, but 23 if you count them all. And so in a conversation with the county today, the question that I asked our county contact person was, well, do we have to address all 23 or are we talking about addressing eight? And her comment was, well, all the counties heard from the state in May, early May, that the expectation or the thinking, the thinking now, is that you have to address all 23. And the feedback from the counties was, you can't do that to the field in May when they're trying to finalize their plans and have the boards adopt before the end of June concurrently with the budget. So Alameda County's position, we're told, as well as that of many other counties, is when they review the plans for approval, they're only going to look to see that all eight priorities are met, not that they're unpacked for 23. Now, having said that, over the last three or four days, we have made every effort to try to unpack those eight priorities and try to specifically identify what components of each of the eight priorities, the specific actions and services are intended to address. It may not be perfect. People can argue whether it's truly aligned to that, but in hours of staff conversation, when we looked at each of the actions and services that are proposed, we made every effort to ensure that there was alignment to the, not just the priorities, but the sub-priorities, our so-called sub-priorities as well. Just to get closure on that conversation, the county did suggest that probably next year, the next refinement of the LCAP process probably will include the need to address all of the sub-components of the priorities. So only to illustrate this kind of ongoing, evolving process in the refinement of this process, and based on feedback from the field, I'm sure, as well, and the feedback from the counties that are responsible for approving the plan. So, all of this to say that I'm sure that with all intentions to try to implement this process here, with the intent of the statute, it probably wasn't perfect. There are probably areas certainly we can improve. As the board and the staff move toward the development or the revision of the LCAP that you ultimately approve next week, but as that is looked to be revised and improved, then I think the commitment of staff is to ensure that the letter and intent of the law is followed, partly because the staff will have more time to refine the plan. And so what we're presenting this evening to you is, I think, staff's best effort, given the circumstances of transition that occurred in the district, and given the fact that there was only one staff person who really could work on this, it wasn't a staff of three or four people. And I think, given that, we, as we prepared the draft for this evening's study session, I think generally feel very good about what is there. Yes, it needs to be refined. Yes, it could be improved. But ultimately, the goal is to meet the county's expectations for what is necessary in order for the county to approve the plan. And any future refinements, whether it's developing a local, user-friendly version of it for public consumption, can be worked, that can be done certainly later in the summer or early in the fall. But I think staff, kind of, we felt under the gun because we know the board needs to approve this next Wednesday. But, so our first priority was ensure that the plan met the requirements of the county in terms of their accepting and then reading and ultimately approving the plan. And then, secondly, try to make the plan as readable as we can versus the, I think, two other versions of the plan that you've seen in the last three weeks or so. So with that, just as kind of some introductory comments, I would like to suggest our process for this evening. Originally, we thought, well, maybe we can go through Sections 1, 2, 3 again, and then go through the prioritization process. I trust the board had a chance to review the actual Sections 1, 2, and 3, 3A, B, 3C, and D will be prepared following this evening's meeting for the board to have by early next week, based on the decisions the board makes this evening. But we think that it would be maybe more efficient and effective if we were to go through a prioritization exercise and then go back and review Sections 2 and 3, and primarily because the county was very clear, they do not want to see anything in the plan that's not funded, either with new funds or with existing funds. And so some of these sections of Chapter 2, maybe, Section 2 may be taken out, particularly if they're addressing newly fund, new proposed areas. In any case, what ultimately ends up in the plan, of course, has to address all eight priorities. And a number of things in Section 2 are currently ongoing and currently funded by the district's base grant. So we thought, if you can bear with us, we can do the prioritization exercise relatively quickly, I think. And then after the board looks at how, as a board, you have ranked the priorities, then we go back and then discuss those parts of Sections 2 and 3 that will remain in the plan and take board comment on that, rather than take comments on all of 2 and all of 3, only to find that, in fact, they have to be taken out of the plan before we submit to the county. So if the board is okay with that, I'm going to facilitate the prioritization process.
Okay. So just so that I'm conscious of the previous public comment section, if Mr. Gibbs could please come up to the podium again and perhaps finish out, because I think we were at, I think I had three items, but if you wouldn't mind completing that section for us, and then we'll move into our study session, the other section.
And Mr. Gibbs, can I say something before you start?
Yes.
You know, I have no problem hearing what you have to say, and I think what you have to say is important. But in your comments, can you just try to refrain from not, you know, bashing staff and administrators in our district regarding maybe some of the things that you feel that they didn't do right, or some things that are not going right? And I understand, you know, your feelings towards that.
I think, I think-
But, hold on, I can take all your comments, and I think everything you're talking about, like I said, is valuable. Okay? But that's all, that's all I'm asking.
I think that what maybe you don't realize from your chair is that when you run an LCAP meeting, since, so like, our SSC meetings were focused on the LCAP and the statute from day one. We didn't have like one meeting at the end of the year. That the number-one challenge that we had to broach, breach as a SSC was the inability to be heard by the staff members.
And I understand that. And I hear you saying that, I hear you.
I've made every attempt-
And I think every board member here knows that.
But I've made every attempt to-
And I know it's frustrating.
I've made, it's not frustrating, it's reality. If I was frustrated, I would give up. I've made every attempt to eliminate petty, small, personal issues and just focus in on what are the budget items-
Okay.
And what are the process.
Okay.
But when, by law, staff is required to come to SSC meetings and they don't come-
Okay, okay.
Then it's very hard, and when you have to literally-
Okay.
Chase down information to get a budget, to get academic data, and you've gone out of your way to make sure that everyone's invited and known and noticed, and then you get told, hey, well, don't say anything, it's like, well-
No, it's not, no, no.
What do you want me to say?
It's not not say anything, because I think everyone in this room have heard your, you know, complaints. Everyone in here knows how you feel.
It's not how I feel. I don't think you know that for the past four months, no one came to our meeting.
You're giving us your, you know, your advice and your recommendations on, from your committee people, you know, regarding what should go in the LCAP. That's what you're here today at this time doing.
Okay, so what did-
So, before we go with the-
But could you clarify what I did? What did I say that was not factual, that was opinional?
Can I interrupt real quick, because you have valuable time, and I want to make sure you get that done, your piece done, and y'all figure it out outside of here? Because I think you just, because I want you to be able to put your story in terms of priorities on the table, so we know what they are.
And I support that.
And I agree, I got that, but-
I support that, okay.
Please, carry on as you would have before you approached. Thank you.
Mr. Gibbs, can I just summarize what I heard, your priorities? Because I just want to make sure I got your outline in my head. Number one, bilingual parent liaison, and then-
There's a written document that was sent that was supposed to be distributed to you that actually has it in already, so you don't have to take notes. You just don't have it.
Not having that in front of me, and I'm sure we'll, hopefully, we can get that while we're going through our process. Number two-
Hopefully.
Targeted professional development.
Mm-hmm.
And number three-
It's not number three, so actually, there's one item.
Yeah, so that was a, that you had like one item with a couple different options.
Yeah.
So this is option, number two is a couple of options.
Because that comes it together under, that's, both of those are district-wide, so they affect anti-Aids and ECSS, because we didn't want something that's going to be all ECSS or all anti-Aids, right? Because that's not the spirit. It also has to hit-
So it's a 2A and 2B?
The students that are most in need. It can't just hit the most outstanding students, or just the black students, or just the Hispanic students, right?
Yeah, so, so it's number two, and there's A and B, professional development and PE teacher? Again, I just want to get the outline and the priorities right.
The PE teachers are second, is B.
B.
Superintendent, do you have a copy of this document? Does anybody have a copy? Because I wrote a document at the request of the superintendent.
Well, just-
So someone should have a copy of the document.
Well, let me just fill a little bit of clarity, Mr. Gibbs, a couple things. One is, you and I spoke yesterday at 2:25 PM in the afternoon, and I called you in response to a previous meeting that you and I had, because I wanted to make sure I returned and followed up with you. And I had said to you in that conversation that if you wanted to, based on what you had told me about the process, give, to give me information so that I could be well-informed and make sure I know as best as I can the priorities, if I make any recommendations tonight to the board or ask to, that I can do that. I didn't at any time, and I'm sorry if you thought that I meant that I was going to pass on anything you sent to me, but I had asked you to, if you wanted to, to fill me in as best as I could, so that, so-
It's a, it's a challenge, Superintendent, because, you know, I've come to the board multiple times, specifically about the LCAP, specifically about the time. You know, for instance, I've been asking about the meeting of the LCAP for the Parent Advisory Committee since January, and I got an email in January saying it'll be, the first meeting will be the first week of February, which would have been great, because you'd have time to have five or six meetings. The meeting didn't, the first meeting didn't happen until March 27th, so at the first meeting, what they, what was explained, I already knew about the LCAP, but was explained, which is procedure, this is what the LCAP is, and then you spend 20 minutes. Then there was only one other meeting, which is documented here in the LCAP, so there was one meeting to explain what we're going to do, and then there was another meeting to explain to the Budget Advisory Committee what they did. So where were all the meetings to determine what the Budget Advisory should do? I mean, when you selected to do superintendent, you didn't have two meetings, you had seven, you had 10, when you, when you make a decision. And so when someone says there was only two staff members, one staff member involved, honestly, there were a lot of people that wanted to get involved that were more qualified than me, 10-plus years' experience educating, et cetera, et cetera, that volunteered, that wrote documents. You've got a, you've had a site plan, which you'll get next year, which proves, hey, these people will write a quality document. It's a very well-written document that we wrote without help. It's quite impressive. So that could have been a part of the process, so there was more than one person available. And I had to fight for that meeting and finally got it after harassment almost, right? And then it's like, oh, but wait a minute, man, you're rushing in at the last minute, when that wasn't the case, come on. Do you want to copy all the emails?
So, so probably-
What are your priorities? That's what we want.
Hey, well, we got off course, not by me. I was just going to go down the list.
We could probably get a copy of it, though, for our discussion, but if you wouldn't mind taking-
You've got a copy, yes.
Please, give us your list.
You've got a copy, but like a lot of things, it just doesn't get to the board. You can do whatever you want, but it doesn't necessarily get to the board. That's why I'm here. And by the way, I hate that I'm here at the last minute, because every effort was made to come early.
It's not really the last minute.
To get on the calendar-
Mr. Gibbs, we haven't decided.
In a non-confrontational way, but I'm up against the July 1st deadline, so this is my last chance unless I want to whiff and wait till next year. So I'm only doing what I've been forced to do, and I would have done it another way if I could. And I'm not going to apologize, because every effort was made to do it the right way. This isn't the right way, by the way. This isn't the right way, but every effort was made to do it the right way. I'm just going to go down this list of documents. You have a copy of it, if you would like to read it, it's well-written.
We have not decided anything. We are about to decide. What we want to hear is your list.
Okay. I was giving it to you until I was criticized for, I didn't make any personal attacks, I just told the truth. And by law, one, number one, by law, staff members are required to attend SSE meetings. And by law, and it's quoted in this document, the number, they are required to, the superintendent is required to present the LCAP to the D-LAC committees, required to request comments, specifically and written comments from the public, which the superintendent has to respond to before the board can submit this to the state. That's in the law. I didn't create that, okay? So those things were not done in their entirety. Some of them were done, but they weren't done in their entirety. I don't like this stuff. So if you don't like it, you got to talk to the state of California. The physical education instructor is meant to bring calm to the campus, but also, if the teachers do not have to spend, I know that teachers are multi-subject, and they have the capability to teach more than one, one course, but we don't have a science, a science teacher in many of the grades, we don't have a music teacher, we don't have a physical education teacher, we don't have a foreign language teacher, we don't have specialized social studies and math, so there's only a limited amount of multi-subject teaching one individual can do. So the physical education teacher isn't just, hey, we want the kids to have this education, although many of our kids are three times more likely to have diabetes, so really, we should have a special physical education program. The idea is that by having that position, the teachers would then have more prep time, because in the high school, the teachers right now have like three times as much prep time as teachers in anti-Aids, okay? So the teacher's saying, I would do more, but I don't have any prep time. Then also, right now, we have a situation where teachers, like, say, in the third grade, they work together and they work their things out, and they do their homework, dah, 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 dah. But say the art teacher does not have a chance to commune with the third-grade teacher, the art teacher does not have a chance to commune with the seventh-grade teacher, and they said, well, we would like to kind of cross-pollinate to provide a more rich environment. So the strategy of the physical education teacher isn't just about kids running around the yard. It's also to provide maybe professional development time to help students that need tutoring, maybe, or whatever special needs in an academic sense, so it's in partnership with other things, and of course, that would require the input of the principal, the input of the superintendent, on how best to execute that, right? So I wouldn't know how to best to execute that, but if we have the time and the budget and the planning, then that would be part of that deal. Then the next thing that would go, that's still in the second, the second topic would be, that would leave enough money for a science teacher at the secondary school. Now, we, the, I have background on the basic curriculum for science, which is going to kind of be restricted to certain targeted grades because of testing, because of impact, that is fine. However, science is important, right? We're supposed to be a tech campus, and dah, 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 dah. So even if the science teacher was full-time at the high school, that person could also do surveys, so maybe not a full-time teacher, but let's say, say, okay, in certain semesters, they could do certain targeted science programs in certain grades. So let's say, for instance, the third grade doesn't really have science the whole year, but maybe they're teaching full-time in the ESSS, and then they come down and give kind of like a survey to give exposure in between the standard science teaching. Once again, this is just a proposal, it's not something that's written in stone, but it's in light of the fact that there's a limited amount of dollars, right? So the next and last one is C, which is two credentialed substitute teachers, which I've talked about before. And this comes from a variety of sources. So the reality is, is that the, there's, oftentimes, you walk in, there's four or five teachers missing, it's a fact, okay? So I have pictures on my phone of eighth graders sitting in a class with kindergartners, okay? So that's, happens every single week. This, this last semester was every single week, at least once, many times, multiple times. So the idea is that a full-time person employed by the district, one, the district overspends on substitute teachers, two, a full-time person would be able to have to show up to work every day, if there's no need for substitute teachers, that person could assist on the yard, that put, if we have classrooms, we have certain classrooms, particularly in the middle school grades, where we have some individual students with known discipline problems, attention issues, that person could go in to maybe support a staff member and just kind of relieve them by kind of being that in-classroom teacher's assistant. We had student teachers who were teaching classes they weren't supposed to teach. We had student teachers who were meeting out discipline, meaning, I've had multiple conversations with parents where student teachers who were not allowed to decide about discipline were assigning students to clean up the lunchroom for a week or two. So it may seem like, oh, okay, this is kind of like a pie-in-the-sky thing, but trying to correct real issues, I think, like, all of these issues were discussed in-depth at multiple SSE meetings, you know? But we just don't have the opportunity to present. The second thing, those are the things that are written down, the other things that are required, that are items that are in here that aren't really substantive as far as most of the leaders in the community, as far as when they really came down to them, like the middle school sports, hiring full-time teachers in all instructional programs, a tech instructor, I've talked about how that shouldn't be in LCAP before, I've hit, I think I've buried the bone on that, on how that could be funded with Title I funds and funds that have already been allocated, parent education, parent university, internships and jobs, other administrative staff salaries for like, you know, testing and like walking around the campus and doing kinds of evaluations, and AP courses. I'm in strong support of all of those things, just not necessarily with the LCAP funds. The AP courses are obviously for the most outstanding students, I do think we should have more AP courses, I do think we should do more internships, but there are other methods to getting that stuff across than the dollars that are really supposed to be targeted for the students that need the most help and what we as a district are in urgent need. So if parents are afraid for the safety of their kids, that supersedes an ideal curriculum that someone may dream up in a room, but when you walk the campus, it's not a reality, okay? So we're just dealing with the realities, not, there's other stuff that we wish, but we wanted to eliminate all that, because we'd look like fools if we came to you with a list of 22 items, right? And so that's critical. The other thing is timeliness. Guys, you got the right to make whatever decisions you have, but time is undefeated. I can't beat time, you can't beat time. There's never been a man or woman that walked this earth that can beat time. We miss too many deadlines, period. That's got to change, okay? You make a decision I like, great. You make a decision I don't like, great. Either way, I'm rolling with you. Make it on time, because none of us have the right to be late. Am I understood? Because that hurt us in the principal search. It's hurting us right now with our staffing concerns in tech. You know, it completely derailed the LCAP process below the level of the staff members in this office and the board. You're fine, but everyone else feels excluded. And when I mean everyone else, I mean the D-LAC committee, I mean the PTO, I mean the SSC, I mean the teachers. And I don't mean two. Yes, there are five or six teachers on anti-Aids campus that solidly support staff decisions. There's maybe five or six on ESSS that solidly support. So what does that mean? There's eight or nine that don't care, and the other 50, 60% really felt excluded. So we're kind of a majority nation. I'm not saying that there's no support for things that are done, but it's not 75%, and everybody knows that, as evidenced by the recent exit of certain staff members. So those are things that are really, really critical. And the other thing is that, is that this was not a process at which people were not interested in, not informed, not willing to participate, not willing to go. There were members who attended SSE meetings in the beginning of the year, because like usual, with the committees that have weight, because they do understand how things work, when they thought that they could control the agendas and the items and the production, they were at every single meeting. As soon as they couldn't, they were at no meetings. Regardless, they were not at the meetings of the writing of the plan, they did not present data, they had to be chased down in their offices, and the data had to be extracted from them. That is what happened, and yet a document was produced. I'm sure that they've done this in the past, and I'm sure people failed, but I don't have excuses. So I'm not going to come up at the end of the year as the chairman and say, because the principal and other administrators didn't support what we were doing, I couldn't get my job done, or I did a piss-poor job, like, I don't operate like that. But that doesn't mean that it was wrong, what went on. And so that has to change. And some people may think like, okay, well, you're, you're not being friendly, you're not being, whatever, but the reality is, every time I talk to a teacher about how to implement, I have to confront the, hey, they don't, they talk about the last staff meeting, hey, you know, we had a staff meeting about our schedule, we're just sitting there banging our heads into the wall. I have to confront that at every single step. I have to confront discipline issues with the parents every single time. So it's not like, I want to do this, I want to, you know, I literally have the board member from UC Berkeley's Computer Science Program that has gotten sixth graders to do the same work that UC Berkeley Computer Science freshmen do.
Mr. Gibbs.
And yet, I can't recommend him because I don't know what, he wants to come to the district, but what am I sending him into?
Mr. Gibbs, are you through with your priority?
You know, that was the experience.
From the time you stopped with your priorities to now is what I asked you, because you refrained from doing. That's what I meant, right there.
You know?
So I'm taking it right now, you're through with your priorities, you've been through with them.
I'm talking about the experience. I am talking, you, your voice is heard, our voice is not heard. It's not legal to not listen to us.
I hear you. I've been hearing you.
So, just to bring it to a close, in terms of process, I think Mr. Gibbs has been very, very forthcoming with what has not worked, and appreciate absolutely, and I think with the comments made earlier, we have a lot to do, a lot to do, and appreciate the, you know, what you put in front of us, I think has been very helpful. And I can't say that I knew every ounce of all of this, so you've, I've just imagined hit the tip of the iceberg on so many things, but do appreciate you bringing forward the, what you believe were prioritized items from the conversations you've had and from those different groups, and I think that's very valuable to our discussion this evening. But in terms of process, I do, I do want to acknowledge that I'm fairly certain, because of so much that has happened, and it being a new, a new system and a new set of framework and rules, that we didn't do everything that we should have done, and we have a lot, a lot that we've learned from this. The board has definitely learned a lot from this process. And in terms of expectations, as was mentioned earlier, Dr. Rubio knows what those are, just from the sheer experience of being part of it early on in the, the end of the year. So I would just hope that you be patient with us and understand that we're frustrated with you in a lot of ways, just because we're just kind of at the end right now. But I just want to make sure that we do have your priorities that you've mentioned, and I think we've filed there, but in terms of process, I think that's a continuing conversation. But in order for us to, I think it's now time for us to prioritize so we can at least get to that next, next level, and I know you said you had a time commitment, I don't want to keep you here as long as, you know, 20- I don't want to keep you here as long as, you know, 20 more hours at all. But, but do want to acknowledge, you know, that your leadership and your guidance through the process and what you've been able to do this school year has been tremendous as a parent. And look forward to that continued support. And not to, you know, I'm not trying to.
It's not about continued support, and it's not about being personal. But you're, you're, you're talking to the wrong person as far as reaching out. Because every effort was made to reach out, and reach out politely. Reach out in private, over email, one-on-one conversation, advance notice of what was coming. Concern.
Not the message you got.
And by the way, and by the way, I'm not without sympathy for some of the situations that staff members find themselves in. You just can't choose not to show up. That doesn't mean you didn't work hard.
And just so the board knows, if I may say, I, I did appreciate the information and the time Mr. Gibbs has given and the history that he's provided for me. And if the board does want to know the incoming superintendent's recommendations tonight, at any point in the evening, I, I do have some recommendations among the items, and a couple of them do overlap with the recommendations provided by Mr. Gibbs. So I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Gibbs. And that, just so you know, later in the evening, in case you're not here, some of my recommendations that the board chooses to ask me actually do overlap with at least a couple of yours as well. Not just yours, but from the groups and the information you provided. So thank you.
That's fine.
All right. Well, I, I appreciate getting the comments from Mr. Gibbs and the groups he's been working with, and I appreciate.
Oh, and by the way, I left out the direct intimidation of my SSC board members because that isn't appropriate for public meetings.
I appreciate it.
But there was plenty of it.
You can leave that on.
Thank you. So I believe now we have that section, and I appreciate your letting us adopt that and pull it into an appropriate spot in L cap and out of the public comment section. But we'll now move on to the next phase, and we do have that initial information in front of us.
Great. Thank, thank you. So just, just a few brief comments about the prioritization process in terms of dollars. I think, well, let me just first say that all of the items that you have in your plan obviously will not get submitted on our final application to the county because, again, the county only wants to see a plan for items that are funded either with existing dollars or continuing, or new dollars. So I think every effort, as Ms. Allen has indicated before, that all of the items that got generated from the very stakeholder groups, there was an effort to capture all of those in the current version of the plan. But the board also knows that the total costs on the low end, and, and there's a range here because for some of the personnel costs, it depends ultimately on where that individual comes in on the salary schedule. But probably on the low end, the total cost of items is somewhere in about $600,000 range and could go as high as a million dollars depending on the personnel positions. And there is actually about, there is $241,000 largely from, or all from the supplemental concentrated grant the district received for this coming year. And so it is, the, the bottom line number that the board has available to allocate its priorities to is 241,000. With that said, however, the board is familiar with the budgeting process in the district. And the board certainly may be able to fund additional items in the early, as early as the early fall when the actual cost of items approved in this plan are actually determined. And I'll go through those as I explain each of these items before you go through the prioritization exercise. Also, the board is aware that the process of closing the books on the 1314 year occurs through the summer months, July and August. And at some time at the end of August, early September, we have a pretty good unaudited actuels that are calculated on the prior year budget. And it's possible that when that is completed, there may be some additional carryover monies from the prior year that would be available to the board. Of course, you have to be careful that you don't spend one-time monies on ongoing expenditures because that actually has the impact of creating an ongoing structural deficit. But, and there's always the opportunity that other grants may, the district has submitted a number of grants that are pending. And in some cases, such as a federal grant, we won't know till September. But as, if, if grants are received by the district, in many cases, some of those grants could be used to pay for costs that perhaps the supplemental grants paying for, supplemental concentrated grants. So that would free up those dollars then for the board to be able to allocate to other priorities. So I, I guess I'm trying to encourage the board to say that, you know, what, what you approve this evening as the highest priorities doesn't mean that the other items on the list that end up with a lower priority won't be, won't be able to be funded at some point. Also, I just want to remind the board that Mr. Bonet, in the budget study session, indicated to the board that for 1516, the year after next, based on the FICMAT calculator, it would appear the district would be entitled to approximately another $200,000 in supplemental concentrated grants. So, so there, there is likely to be future opportunities to, to fund some of the other prior. And of course, the priorities may change over the course of a year. So with that said, what I'd like to do is you have, I believe, in front of.
Can I interrupt and ask pertinent questions related to what you just said before we move on? Number one, just for clarity's sake, we, we have 241,000 in supplemental base. No, just supplemental concentration base. And then we did have an increase of 85,000 in base. And I asked Mr. Bonet, because many other districts in doing this are looking at that increase too. But according to Mr. Bonet, that 85 is spoken for because we, we lost other revenues, like from the GEAR Up, from the federal and other thing. Is that right? I just want to confirm that we don't have our base increase.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think there are a number of components to why we don't recommend that the 85,000 increase in base funding actually be viewed as new money. I think part of the GEAR Up grant ending and the need to transfer some of the ongoing expenses to some of the staff that have, were funded in the GEAR Up will have to be funded through the 85,000. There is the step-in column increases that districts, all districts customarily encounter from one year to the next. There is also, and I understand the governor signed the budget today, but we have not received from our consultants, our sources like School Services, the actual detailed breakout. I think they'll have a governor's budget conference scheduled in July where 90 percent of superintendents and CBOs attend to understand how the budget plays out. However, we had heard that there was some compromise between Assembly and the Senate regarding the STIRS contribution or the increased STIRS contribution in the first year. I think the governor's proposal was an increase of 9.25 percent. And I think from the current eight and a quarter percent. And what we understood was that the compromise was at 8.8 percent. So there may not be as much of a call on the 85,000 in order to cover any potential increases in STIRS, STIRS contributions. So those are the main things, step-in column, the ending of the GEAR Up grant, and also the, whatever the actual percentage increase to the STIRS contribution becomes. I should mention one thing about the GEAR Up grant, however, though. Ms. Allen went to a technical workshop presented by Department of, Federal Department of Ed yesterday. And we are in partnership and also getting assistance through Townsend Public Affairs to submit a new application for the next funding cycle for GEAR Up. And so we're hopeful that we will be able to be refunded for GEAR Up.
Okay. So in conclusion, I'm comfortable not, not touching the 85 at this point as well. On your last point, I had not heard there was any change to the STIRS contribution. Okay. What I, what I had heard is that the governor added a little more LCFF, about 250 million more than he was proposing and may revise to cover what would effectively be the sum total of the district's STIRS contribution for the year, which is, you know, less than 240 million or whatever they're adding. So that we, we, we might have that piece covered, one way or another, whether it was a reduction or an addition of LCFF money. But we, we will figure that out.
John, to answer your question on the STIRS, it, it was reduced from the 9.5 percent originally to now 8.88 percent when the state adopted the 1415 budget. And then just FYI, on the GEAR Up this year in 1314, it was covering part of Alacrida and the high school principal FTE. And because of the expiration of that grant at the end of this year, those FTE has to be back in the general fund.
Next, Dor.
Then my next point, and we, we might need Dor to answer the question part of it is, the budget that we're to adopt next week is a budget for 1415. The L cap is actually a three-year plan, right? And it has columns for actions and expenditures for 1516, 1617. And it seems to me that we ought to be putting in there at least our current plan, which we can change next year in our annual update if we don't like it anymore, for, for what we're going to do with that 200,000 more in 1516. And I think it's, what, 300,000 more? We, we, we go up even further in 1617. So we ought to know what those numbers are. And we, what we don't, you know, pick for 1415 tonight, we can pick to start in 1516, and if not, then 1617.
That, that's correct. We did ask the county about that. The county said, well, we're just, for purposes of the financial review part of the plans that are submitted by districts, their, their business service department will be looking at the ability of the district to afford the 1415 year, understanding that districts can make adjustments to any of the components of the plan in 1516. My guess is, though, just having looked at the budget and looked at the various items on here, that for anything that you approve this evening to be included in the budget that has a compounding increase, that the increase ought not to be such that it uses up all the 200,000. I mean, if you just eyeball it, and if there were, you know, a few personnel positions that you added, the, the compounding increase with step-in column and so forth shouldn't get close to using up the 200,000. So my anticipation is you will actually, at that point next year, when you're looking at the 1516 budget, that you ought to have new dollars available to, to allocate to other priorities.
Can we, can we get those dollars on the table tonight? A more precise figure of, it might have been in Mr. Bonet's presentation last week.
Yeah. Part of the problem in doing that is, depending on what items, for, just, let me just give you an example. If you were to fund a full-time teaching position, there are a number of them here. We have, we have pegged that position at potentially the highest step-in column that a teacher can come in if you were to hire someone from the outside. And plus the salary-driven costs, plus the most expensive benefit package, which is why we have 103,000. In reality, when all is said and done, and if you give us authorization to hire a full-time teacher for whatever subject, and the total cost of that teacher comes in at 75,000, then technically, the next time you go and looking at what dollars you have available right from that one position, you could have 25 to 28,000 dollars unallocated. So it's difficult to project for 1516, not knowing what the actual numbers will end up being for 1415.
I, I just wanted to add, I'm sorry. I, I don't think it contradicts anything that Dr. Sugiyama said, but in the same vein, just in terms of prioritization, if there's something that you think that, hey, let's go ahead and at the, at this moment, let's kind of make this the number one priority, we think, for the following school year. I don't think there's anything that, why wouldn't we, you know, if you.
No, and I think as you go through this exercise, I think that what your next order of priorities for funding will be can then be looked at staff as an estimate for what may be possible in 1516. So with that, what I'm going to propose we do is we go down each of the items on your funding, unfunded priorities list from Section 3. And we go down each item. I explained to you how we got the cost estimate for each item. And in some cases, there's an interrelationship between some of the items on this list, among some of the items on the list. So I want to make sure that before I ask you to assign relative priorities to this, to each item, that you understand how we got to the cost number. Obviously, these items on this list have more information about it in Section 2 and 3. But again, for the sake of this exercise, I'm going to assume you had a chance to review that. If you have, before you do the prioritization, if you have any questions about any of the items, staff will take those questions, attempt to respond to them. And then we're going to have the board individually assign priorities to each of the items. I think there's 22 items on here. And then we'll see, we'll calculate an average, average score for each item. And then the board could visually look at what the quantitative analysis looks like. And then I think the board should spend some time talking qualitatively about the items.
So John, what, what document are we actually looking at?
This document here.
Appendix D.
Yeah, it's, it's.
That's not Appendix D?
It says, no, it says L cap goals and proposed funding priorities, unfunded priorities from Section 3. Okay. So let me, let me go down each of these items.
Before we do this, because like, one item was raised by Mr. Gibbs that's not on these 22. And that's the two credentialed substitute teacher fill-ins, which is, I actually understand it from previous conversations Mr. Gibbs made here and elsewhere, that, that the point of that recommendation was that that's not really an increased cost to us. It's a substitute cost. In other words, instead of using a substitute pool, we hire people with that money and just hire some full-times, you know, subs, as it were. So that it's not sort of a new, a new increased fund. It's just spending our substitute dollars in a different way. Is that, is that accurate?
Well, a number of districts do use that strategy, but they do it when they do an analysis of what the call on substitutes is at their site on a day-to-day basis. So, for example, in my previous experience, we knew at the high school, we had every day at least five or six teachers who were out. And the high school's probably not the best example because we usually try to secure substitutes who have credentials in that area. But let's say in elementary school.
I'm going to, I think we're going to go down a very long road here. And I'm going to try to do this quickly because I want to get to these priorities. The challenge with that is when you look at the cost of substitutes, if you look at the total cost, you're reflected on every day of the year, which is 183. It's like a hotel room, though. If you don't rent it, it's not there. People get sick in clusters. So we're going to need five substitutes in February and none in June. And so you need that pool. You can't have two people subbing in for all the days because the days won't add up. And so you'll end up increasing your costs significantly by having people sitting around it because we'll still need five or six subs, you know, February 3rd, when everybody has the, the flu. So it's, it, it really is a challenge to do it that way.
That's absolutely correct. But we, we did do that last year, didn't we? We had one person, and they ended up mostly filling in for a staff member who was out most of the year. But are, are, are we planning to do that again this year with that at least one person?
I don't know the, the answer to that.
I don't know the answer to that question, but I will tell you that, because I've already heard about this issue from teachers in my meetings in the last couple of weeks, and the online survey that I have done, that I have made a note, because I understand the point, and I thought Mr. Gibb made a good point. And I understand that the math works out, but I don't think it would work out, because of the five absences in one day, we would still be in trouble. I'm not sure of the history, and if we've tried in the past, or not to, what would it be? I don't know the right word. But to have a partnership with another larger school district, so one of the items that I've made note up to myself is to contact both Oakland Unified and another school district that's neighboring us, to find out if we cannot somehow work something out to where we can be part of their subsystem, because it is a very real issue that, well explained by Mr. Gibb, and that I've been hearing about. So I'm going, that's my, those are some of the steps I'm going to take. Yeah, so I thought I would let you know that.
You also triple your cost per day by having someone full-time, you know, because a sub is 125 dollars a day, and a little extra for taxes and such. A full-time person's probably in the 300 to 400 range per day.
We've been spending a lot of extra money on extra pay for teachers who take portions, you know, because we don't get the subs, we split them to three teachers, and then we pay over, you know, time or extra to our regular teachers. And that ends up costing us almost as much as if we had just hired a full-time pinch-hitter. So I think it's, I guess my point is, hopefully that we can address this issue. It does seem like a real issue, you're hearing about it, but it may be a fiscal management issue as opposed to something that belongs on this list, or does it belong on this list?
But I think the topic, because staff should every year bring to you analysis of substitute costs and substitute needs. During my tenure here, we did contact, we were in a kind of a subs shortage situation, and it's an item unto itself, because you have to look at what we're paying substitutes on a daily rate versus what our districts we compete with are paying. The problem, and the reason, the main reason why districts go to a full-time sub is because they find themselves not having coverage. And so if you commit a person to be at school X every day, at least for one position, you know you can cover it. And it was particularly a strategy used in a period of time when there was really a shortage of subs. I don't think it's as much of an issue today, there are occasionally those days when we have, if we have staff development, and we need more subs than we normally do. But my understanding from Ms. Harrell is, it's not quite the issue today as it was four or five years ago. But it's a topic that needs to be looked at irrespective of, and I don't think in most cases it's going to save you money, but what it does is at least ensures that you have one substitute there. If you have two or three people out, you can't fill them all, so it just reduces the classes for which teachers don't have to cover during their prep. So I think that's a good topic for the staff to bring back to the board sometime in the fall, early fall.
So then, if we're not going to put it on this 20-odd list of priorities, then I would request Dr. Rubio that you bring it back early, like August, early September, especially after we know what our budget is, based on, as Dr. Sugiyama indicated, you know, we might not be at 103,000 for our new hires, so we'll have a little better sense.
Okay, if I could go down each item, and again, we'll take questions on, any questions you have about how the amount was calculated. So Item B, provide a full-time PE teacher in Annie Yates. We're estimating, just to be safe, that the cost for next year will be 103,727. And again, that assumes that whoever's hired in that position is able to come in at the highest step in column that our current teacher's contract allows for. So therefore, the full-time technology teacher is currently pegged at the same rate. Now, for those two positions, the funding sources that we identified are supplemental concentrated grant and also Title I. My understanding is, the Site Council, Annie Yates, has, I'm not sure if "approves" is the right word, but as indicated, a willingness to approve subsidizing part of that position from Title I funds. So I'm not sure exactly how much that is, 20,000 dollars for each position, but it was just to illustrate that those are the two, there are two funding sources.
So approximately 20,000 to 25,000 each? Is that your understanding, Ms. Harrell?
Then, Item C, the council to provide college guidance or administrative support, is at the same estimated cost for next year, 103,000. The cluster of items under D, curriculum adoptions. Writing will be a major focus in the district, I understand, next year, from a curriculum point of view. There is 20,000 dollars being set aside from the Common Core implementation grant the district received last year to fund the adoption of writing in the district. And as a result of that, you will see in the far-right-hand side, there is a row, there are a row of Xs there, which means that when you go through the prioritization exercise, you do not have to include that, or you do not have to assign it a priority, because the funding for that is already in place.
For that one, Ms. Howland, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, if you have, do you have the, where we are in terms, like, when the last adoption was for math in ELA? Because I don't remember.
The last math adoption was probably four years ago, I think, with everyday math, in terms of, maybe, it may be four or five years ago, everyday math. That was, and that's K through 6. With the middle school and the high school math, it's basically had items, where curriculum has been purchased every year based on the course or class. So it wasn't like a full textbook adoption, but it may be a teacher who's offering a course, like calculus or something, and the books were outdated, because with the specific classes, it's a lot, it's a lot less in terms of funding versus the whole curriculum adoption. However, ELA, a long time, a very long time ago. Especially 6th through 8th grade. Open Core has been adopted originally, and then the second revision was adopted, and then last year, foreign language was adopted. So, and I think social studies may have been five, about five or six years ago, K, 6, but 6 through 12, social studies, it has been a very long time. So for the most part, in terms of Common Core, when we adopted last year's Spanish curriculum, the publisher themselves, or the representative stated to wait about a couple of years, because no one is really ready. They slapped Common Core on the books or in the teacher's edition, but when we've had our own teachers actually look through the curriculum, it's really repackaged. It's the same California state standards repackaged, but states' Common Core. So there's been some, so we have been talking to, in terms of our county, for some leadway in terms of adopting a full adoption. Other than that, I think what we have listed here are pilots, because what districts can do is pilot some curriculum before adopting a complete comprehensive.
And that pilot implementation, is that for K-12, or is that just for certain grade spans?
Mathematics, K-8.
K-8, okay.
And then I think social studies, we're going to do social studies 10, 10-12.
Okay, thank you.
On Item B, we had a part-time aid technology teacher this year, right, in the computer lab? So are we, I guess I thought we were upgrading that position to a full-time certified technology teacher.
Yes, my understanding, there is currently, there has been this year, an instructional aide that has been providing instruction under the supervision of a teacher. I think the proposal here is to replace the aide position with a full-time credential technology teacher.
That's my understanding, which, I guess I'm wondering, should we get credit for the, should it not be 103,000, but should we subtract out the aide salary and benefits, because that's what we're adding, is the upgrade, not 100, 1.0 FTE?
I would say, Board of Raff, that that's correct, but as we understand what the proposal was coming from the Site Council, that that cost for the IA technology position may be shifted to meet some other need. If that's not the case, then you are correct. The actual cost for the technology teacher would be potentially 103,000 minus the cost of instructional aid for technology that's currently in the budget, if that position were eliminated.
Yeah, I was at the meeting where the Site Council decided their final priorities, and my recollection is that they were apportioning 20,000 to what they thought was the current aide salary, because they thought that would get the bump up to a full-time credential person. So they weren't reallocating the aide salary, they were using that to enhance.
Okay, well, I wasn't involved in that discussion, so I can't respond to that, but...
Yeah, maybe we can, not 50,000 or...
But my question would be, is the IA a credential person, working as an IA? They're not, so you can't do that.
No, 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 you'd have to get a new person. Actually, I thought Ms. B was a credentialed, but...
She is, she's a credential teacher. But however, this position would be for a credential, for a credential teacher. But the person who happens to be there was a long-term sub, and she happened to be credentialed.
The IA?
The substitute who's there now.
Yeah, so I'm not talking about the person, I'm just talking about the position and the funding for it. So that it might not be a full, yeah, 100,000 invested. I'm just trying to get us more money to do more things.
That's why you're here. Okay, no, I was just trying to understand it, okay. E, seems like. E or continue on D?
So this is, I think he's, did you have any more questions, remember Dice, about D? Okay, so E was to provide two more AP online courses and elective courses, so these courses are not just for students who are accelerated, because the elective courses are also for students who may possibly need it, but the students talked about just needing more elective courses. So this is, the 33,000 comes from a section, so if you, two sections. So each, so this is cost out to how much each section would cost, and two sections would cost 33,000 dollars, based on the, a staff member who has to, who must, who has to supervise it or coordinate it, as well as the courses themselves.
So the students prefer online than actually going to the class itself, or having the teacher come to them, or them going to the community college?
Well, students will prefer to have elective courses on campus, because it's the most, the most convenient would be to go to class on campus. However, in lieu of the fact that we don't have the staffing, this is another alternative option.
And not to revisit history all the time, but correct me if I'm wrong, we've had good success with online AP courses in the past. I mean, we've had a number of students participate in that program over the years, so it's not a new thing, it would just be expanding or increasing.
Yes, and it's, the technology is used really very effectively, particularly in the schools in the rural areas of California, particularly up in the Upper Sacramento Valley area and Northern California. So, I'm sorry, but was the 33,000 was, explained as two, two sections?
Yes.
Okay. Professional development on Common Core up to six days. So the range there, 12,250 to 27,000 per day for each of the six days, I need to explain that to you. In the contract with ETA, there is a provision in the contract that provides for the pay of teachers on an hourly rate, calculate the hourly rate of 35 dollars if it doesn't involve contact with students, and 50 dollars per hour if it does involve direct contact with students who say some instruction. Now, this is professional development, so it really would be based upon the 35-dollar rate. However, you cannot require teachers to come, in this case, to professional development if the district were offered 35 dollars an hour. So the 12,250 dollars per day assumes that you're paying every teacher to come at 35 dollars an hour for a seven-hour professional development day. And so the cost per day, again, if every teacher came, even though you can't require it, at a cost of 35 dollars an hour, the total would be 12,250 dollars per day. The 27,000 dollars per day cost is based upon being able to negotiate with ETA, added workdays on their work-year calendar, that is a matter that is, under the collective bargaining laws, an item that the district would be obligated to negotiate. If there, if the negotiations, if there was agreement to add days to the teacher's work year, the 27,000, then they would be required to attend the professional development as a condition of their work year. And that cost, based on the average per diem rate per teacher in our district, that cost would be 27,000 dollars a day. So we felt, because we didn't know coming into this evening, since we didn't get direction on this as yet, we just wanted to give you the range of costs for a day under those two scenarios. If we go to the next page, for Goal 2, A is purchase Chrome laptops with 30 devices each, is actually Chrome laptop carts. It's a cart-based system, and each cart holds 30 Chromebooks. And the cost per cart with 30 Chromebooks is about 9,500 dollars per cart. Next item is purchase a student information assessment data system. This would be a system that would allow the district to store various types of student assessment data and be able to pull reports out that will assist with both program evaluation and formative assessment, that will allow teachers to look at their classroom practice based on the data on the students. The estimated cost for that is 10,000 dollars. The next item is purchase college guidance curriculum, technology, and materials, including college tours. This is, it doesn't say on here, but it really is focused on grade 6 through 12, and we're estimating the cost for that for next year is 5,000 dollars. The next item, D, is to provide work experience and/or internship experiences for students. And work experience, all of you probably know what internships are, because that's largely gotten most of the focus with CTE. But work experience education is a longstanding program in high schools in California. Essentially, students go out and seek a job 10 hours a week, they're, they can get high school credit for it, but they have to participate at least once a week in an after-school program in which a teacher works with the students around a variety of things, such as workplace preparation, skills. The teacher would have to be the liaison with the field supervisors for the work experience that the student is engaged in. We're estimating a cost to pay for a stipend for this, because it's not a class that meets every day, so it wouldn't be a 16,000 dollar section cost, but could well be a teacher who is willing to take this on as a stipend position at 5,000 dollars. Item E, the district is currently, or district teachers have in the past been trained in second-step positive action at the Peacemaker curriculum. But unless, if there is a program that is a district initiative, and you don't occasionally update the staff, we have a number of new teachers who probably did not have the training, so we're projecting or estimating a 5,000 dollar cost to provide training in these three programs for the new staff that in the past have not been trained. In Goal 3, provide parent workshops and training. It's essentially to provide a full range of parent education, workshops and programs through the year to address a wide variety of topics, not just how to support your child's education, or how to work with your child in reading or literacy, but also workshops, informational workshops. or how to work with your child in reading or literacy, but also workshops, informational workshops for parents on LCAP or workshops on parents related to college planning and the college application process. We're estimating the cost of that to be twenty-five hundred dollars next year. The next item that came from stakeholder groups is appropriate equitable facilities for all organized sports. That is not an item that the board needs to prioritize because the funding for that comes out of Measure J funds as part of the budget for relocation costs that was planned when we knew that we would vacate the, the old ESS site. On the next page, item C, operate a district school attendance review board and school attendance review teams at each school site. Those are currently in operation on a need-be basis. We put in a very small budget here. I, I kind of decided that we need to put something in there because there are material costs oftentimes and it may be as simple as postage in terms of mailing letters. So we're saying basically a, a budget of five hundred dollars for each school site team and five hundred for the district review team to fund the material and supply cost. But the people that serve on the school attendance review board and the site review teams are staff that are salaried staff and so they just, that's part of their assignment or in many cases, I guess they volunteer to serve, serve on those committees. If you go down to section B of, of section three B, and, and this is the section in which we identify what the funding priorities are for the three targeted groups in LCAP, the low-income pupils, English learners and foster, foster youth. And so here we have provide a full-time science teacher at one hundred and three thousand seven two seven. Now, I want to, there is an interrelationship between this item and the item related to adding two more sections at the high school in either AP and/or an elective class. Because the science teacher, this, this is a, this is a proposal to add a second science teacher at ESS. I think staff's thinking is we need to implement a ninth-grade science program. Given the number of students we have in ninth grade, that would represent two sections of a science teacher's five-period assignment. So if we were to hire a full-time science teacher, the proposal would be that that person would teach two sections of ninth-grade science, but then would be available to teach three more periods if they're a full-time teacher, which means that they could teach an AP science class, could teach another elective, a science elective. In actuality, although the proposal is to add two more sections, either AP or elective next year, it's, there's the potential that a full-time science teacher not only could do the ninth-grade science program, but teach three additional periods in science. So you, when you're prioritizing this, you can't look at the full-time science teacher as totally independent from the proposal on adding two, two classes at the secondary school, an AP and an elective, or two APs or two electives, whatever the case may be. Is that one clear?
And this, um, are we gonna, we don't need this person at Annae Yates too?
We have a science, we have a science teacher at Annae Yates.
Yeah, which, you know, and we have eight grades at Annae Yates. So I, yeah, it's just a question of whether that, that's some supplemental help.
I, I was just wondering if, if the high school teacher could then support like all seven of those things? So if I could talk, just say a couple of things about, and I'll...
Want me to do that in August or September, once we have some of this sorted out, to give you the overall of the science program. But we have hired a new science resource teacher at Annae Yates. That teacher is fully covering K five, K one with the teachers doing it in the classroom, two through five with them coming to science, four and five coming more than once a week. That teacher is also going to be fully supporting the eighth-grade teacher so that that eighth-grade teacher can really become a math-science core teacher. The middle school teachers are, who do math-science, are math-science core teachers. Now, that grant that I told you about last week is ongoing professional development for the middle school teachers, will be meeting monthly. I'm going to be providing the support and two, two professors from Cal State East Bay that are going to focus on upgrading the middle school science. So, and, and what we need at the high school is we need to really make solid the high school program. So to get the core biology and chemistry that we need to, to have a teacher for that and then a second teacher to be able to teach ninth grade and between whoever the two teachers are, figure out electives for juniors and seniors in particular. Does that help?
Not at all.
And, yeah, electives meaning, an AP course is, is an elective course. And so it can be AP, it can be honors, it can be various kinds of challenging courses, get them ready for career types of things, really getting ready for UC. So I don't like to use AP per se because that's just one brand, if you will, of an advanced or an honors class, but that type of class.
We've adopted a tech thrust. Is the science position, I guess I think a science teacher could do some tech work?
Absolutely, in fact, we've...
Would, would you say automatically should be able to or do we need to look for the particular skills within it?
I've actually identified some people because we've been doing a lot of interviewing for the position that what we did have and in the course of that, we found some people and it's a question of having a position authorized. But we've identified people who have science and strong computer background, including work in the industry as well as either credentials in math or strong... And so that's, that's one of the things when I mentioned that C-STEM thing that I'm, that Mr. Burns and I are going to, that's also to lay the foundation to be able to do, for example, an integrated course that would be computer science and math and science, for example. But we, we can't design those until we have the teachers to do it. So I would be, on a, just from my own experience, I would rather see us hire the science teachers at the high school to be at the high school. Talk to Ms. Stillman about what it was like to split herself between the two schools or remember back to our music teacher splitting between the two schools. Back when I was doing work at those schools, it's really difficult.
I, I guess, just, um, we've adopted a, a tech thrust. I think this is a very important priority for me. I would not feel comfortable, I guess, prioritizing it unless I knew that the, this position would be able to teach tech in the way that you're talking about so that we can implement our, our tech thrust.
If, if it's authorized, we have been able to identify, be able to do it, we can make that the priority.
You know, Carol, I mean, I, I like that she kind of set the plan out because my concern hiring a ninth-grade science teacher would, was that our seventh and eighth graders wouldn't come in prepared. But I, I, I think I'm hearing, what I'm hearing you say is that, first of all, the, the work you'd be doing in the summertime...
And through the whole...
Right, and through all, actually, right, you're right, all through next, next year, fourteen, fifteen year, it will be training middle, middle school, middle-grade teachers, you know, to teach and support, you know, the science curriculum for the middle school. Therefore, they will be prepared when they get to ninth grade.
Yeah, that's fully being...
Because what I wouldn't want to do is send students into a, a ninth-grade science class unprepared and set them up for failure. You know what I mean? And, and, I mean, not being prepared.
And the whole idea is that everybody will be working with, in articulation.
Right.
But the reason I went after, when we had the opportunity to get some of that Cal, that, that STEM money through Cal State East Bay.
Okay.
We deliberately focused middle school for that reason.
Well, you have me a lot more comfortable by saying that.
Okay, are we ready to move on to the next item?
Yep.
Uh, the next item is provide a stipend or, or a bonus paid to staff for data analysis evaluation. This really is intended to fund the staff time needed after school for teachers to work with each other to look at student data, formative assessment data, to evaluate quality of student work collaboratively and then it, it's, it's kind of like the concept of forming data teams and for the district to become more data-driven in its focus on program improvement and instructional improvement. So we're estimating ten thousand dollars there for next year.
Just interrupt, just applaud that recommendation. I think, and I'm not trying to provide commentary at each item, nor am I trying to, you know, ask the board to do that. I'm sorry, but I just had to, just to value that, that suggestion, I think that was really powerful. In order to be, go in that direction, it seems like to be more transparent and bring more people into the discussion makes a whole lot of sense. So I just wanted to appreciate staff for bringing that one. Thank you.
The next item is provide education specialists access to general education for intervention services through responsive instruction intervention. So I just need to explain this a little bit. At Annae Yates, we have four special education teachers that have created a learning center concept. And it's a combination of pull-out and push-in strategies. But the fact is that three point six full-time equivalents of the four full-time teachers is funded with special ed funds, which by law then prohibits them from working with, from working with students who do not have IEPs. So consequently, my understanding is in the current year, and I don't know if this existed, this was the case last year, but in the current year, forty percent of one of the teachers is being funded by Title I. About forty thousand dollars of Title I money is paying for forty percent of one teacher's salary. As a result, that teacher is able to provide services to targeted students but who may not necessarily be eligible for special ed. Partly because the site council has made a commitment to fund a portion of the PE teacher, the technology teacher, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Those dollars then would not be available for the ability of the special ed teachers to service non-special ed students. So the proposal here is to fund twenty percent of each of the four teachers with supplemental concentrated grant funds, which would then legally allow them to provide services to non-special ed but targeted students who are not meeting standard. The actual cost for that, based on the four incumbents in those positions, would be about sixty-eight thousand, sixty-eight thousand dollars.
I might just add that there has been some communication between us and the state about getting this issue correctly aligned, just so you're aware of that.
This particular...
This particular issue, yeah. And I'll, it is, it is on, it is one of the items I would recommend if you, if you want to know those items later.
Item D, supplemental reading materials for acceleration intervention and for English learners and students with special needs. Fifteen thousand dollars is the estimated expenditure proposal for next year. Item E, provide hourly pay to staff for after-school tutoring and test preparation, test prep for intervention in grade six through eight. So the eighteen thousand dollars would cover the cost of three teachers, one to focus on sixth grade, one to focus on with seventh grade students and the third to focus with eighth grade students. And that dollar amount is calculated on the basis of the hourly rate. And as I mentioned in the teacher's contract, the hourly rate for direct instruction with students is fifty dollars an hour. So it's based on fifty dollars an hour times four hours a week. That is an hour after school every day for four days a week times thirty weeks. There are actually thirty-six, depending on how the calendar falls, there's thirty-five or thirty-six weeks of school during the school year. So there's usually a period, a couple of weeks, when you need to identify students and then usually tutoring programs wrap up two or three weeks before the end of the school year. So we just kind of estimated, it's a thirty-week program, an hour every day, four days a week, at fifty, the cost of fifty dollars, so it's about six thousand dollars per teacher. Total cost for the three grade levels is eighteen thousand dollars. Item F, provide a part-time family resources, core, resource coordinator. As the board knows, we've established a family resource center. It, the offices are coexisting on the city's community, community and recreation department site. And that position currently has been funded through grants that are all due to expire at the end of this year. Ms. Dunn is very active in looking at submitting and has submitted some other grant proposals and has been talking with other partners. Of course, we, as of yet, do not know what, how that's going to work out, but the estimated cost for that would be twenty-five thousand. This is a good example of another item that if the board decided it was a high priority and you wanted to fund it so we'd move forward with this, if grants subsequently came through that could be used for this purpose, then that would free up a supplemental grant that could then be used for other, for other priorities. There's just a few more items on the next page. Yes?
Well, for the parcel tax, I'm just curious, is it because we've probably tapped our, our, where we're going with the parcel tax next year and that's why it's not captured under there? Okay, I saw a nodding head, thank you.
Is that right?
Well, there is money that will carry forward to next year's parcel tax revenues that fund wellness, but those dollars are pretty well committed and is currently not funding actually the family resource center coordinator.
Right, right, because there, because there's been funding identified through Mrs. Dunn's effort, so makes sense.
But I will say this, since I won't be here, I think it's really, no, no, I'm saying this only because I'm thinking about it and if I don't say it, I'll, I'll, I'll forget. I'm sure Dr. Ruben and I'll have a chance to talk about this over the next week or so. But it's always a good idea to reexamine parcel tax expenditures. The board's aware that the measure passed with specific areas for which the tax would be used. But, but obviously, district priorities change. And I don't mean in terms of the categories that were, that were on the measure, but in terms of how those dollars are spent. So it would not be a bad idea for the board in a study session with staff sometime in the fall to take a look at the current proposed expenditures or the current expenditures of parcel tax just to make sure the board, you know, we provide that data to the parcel tax oversight committee and we go in detail with what categories and what we're spending it for. I'm not sure that the board necessarily has had that kind of presentation, so it probably would be good in the fall for the board to have that.
You're in my head, thank you.
And we should keep it, you know, in the same format that I believe you all created about a week or so ago.
Yeah, so actually, appendix B, and I don't want you to, we're not going to spend time on the appendix, but appendix B was an effort to take all of the parcel tax dollars we currently receive, look at what services are being provided and align them to the state priorities. So, and that was really intended only as a resource document for the board so that you can see how the parcel tax dollars are, are spent. And I believe almost all the dollars are represented on that, on that chart. Okay, then the last three items, and then we'll take just any general questions before we, we, we go through this exercise, is provide a part-time ERL teacher. This is at ESS. There is currently no English language learner teacher at... provide a part-time ERL teacher. This is at ESS. There is currently no English language learner teacher at ESS. And although we have not a large population of EL students at the second, at the high school level, there is still, there are students there and who could, who could require service. And the 41,000 represents two periods a day, um, for those students who need, need that support. And then the last two items, uh, F, uh, near the bottom says, provide a Spanish-speaking bilingual parent liaison. $30,000 is the estimate. We, uh, in, in those districts or schools that do have this type of position, they're almost always classified positions. They are not management positions. Therefore, the appropriate rate of pay generally would be about $30,000 a year. And then lastly, provide translation services in Spanish. Uh, we, there are people that are currently, uh, available on staff, part-time classified people who have been providing this service, and they are paid on a time card for that service. And we're proposing a budget of $5,000 to be able to continue that service as needed. The rest of the items are in the, for the targeted, three targeted groups, all have been addressed either in the section on low-income students or, uh, English learners, and so rather than duplicate it, they're not in bold and the priority rank column is, um, is lined out, I guess, with asterisks so that the board would not, uh, not prioritize those twice. So by my count, there's 22 items on the list. Please remember that, uh, in, in a couple of instances, there's an interrelationship between the items. The science teacher, um, could well handle or address the other item related to adding two AP and/or elective classes at the secondary school. So, um, if you were to, for example, assign both of those as a one, number one priority, we would not proceed with that with the assumption it's going to cost 103,000 plus, uh, another cost for two more sections. It would be subsumed under the, the one item for a science teacher.
And, um, before we begin the process, I don't know if the board would like to know my recommendations or priorities, but I'd be very glad to share those with you before you begin. Is that okay? From my overall look and from the, I've heard from 96% of all of our teachers in the last week and a half in response to about 20 or so questions online regarding Common Core, their level of awareness, what they think we need to do next. So, and then looking over the, um, information provided by Mr. Gibb and the input that Ms. Allen has given us all in this process as well. The four things I would recommend is the incoming superintendent to you to highly consider, or I'd strongly encourage you to consider. The, and this is from staff as well as myself tonight. The number one item would be the ESS science teacher position, because we cannot provide ninth graders and other students as well the science courses that we really need to provide, as well as some elective options. And if you have more questions about that, I'm sure Ms. Baugh will be very glad to, um, respond. So that is, uh, the number one priority right now that I would recommend. The second item, and that's on page three, three.
Is this in order of your preferences?
This would be in order. I guess it would be in order, yeah. It's a pretty tight order, but yes. The next item would be item C that I mentioned regarding the communication between our district and the, and special ed and the CDE in terms of, um, in the learning center model, in terms of making sure we can legally have our teachers seeing other students and not just special ed students and make sure we have a, a functioning learning center model. It is therefore my second recommendation that we strongly look at item C on page three for $68,062. My third, um, my third and fourth, and that's about as far as I can go financially, recommendations would be the math adoption, particularly because, uh, the general sense I get from staff is that they feel that we really have to move quickly and, and do some catching up on Common Core. We have 15 teachers at Annie Yates who have committed to move forward in pilot materials, specific math materials regarding math. And so I would, and that is, you know, an item on page one that we identified for approximately $30,000. That would include also some supplemental materials as well that they may not have in that, in this new type, in this new type of adoption. And it is the only math curriculum that I've particularly identified, Berkeley is using it, I'm aware, I believe, that has received certification in a very, seems to be very in-depth review by the Louisiana State Department of Education as being fully aligned so far in math. No other publisher out of about 10 or 15 publishers have been able to achieve that. So, and I am familiar with it coming in from my last district, just, you know, full disclosure in terms of the process we went through nationally, looking across the country. And then the last and final would be still regarding the Common Core. And that is that we really need, and it is item on page one, I think it's, is it the last item? It's item F, that we really, uh, in my conversation so far with teachers and, um, I've expressed that we really need to look at our, our calendar and look at how we're, we need to look at some different ways of being able to do professional development, um, so that we can, there's no way for any school district to accomplish the amount of learning that we need to do right now with new Common Core content material on math, language arts, new ELD standards, new science standards, all of that, and I'm probably forgetting something. So without really doing something different, it is not really going to be able to be effectively accomplished through collaboration time or after-school meetings. And we also have a substitute problem. So as soon as I started talking about it, teachers were very quick to let me know, I will not be able to get more than three or four of them together, and even then I'll be lucky to have substitute coverage. So without doing something very different and having full days of professional development on the calendar for at least a year, we will not be able to do this. And one teacher comment I thought was really, was really pretty good, they said, and I did promise teachers I wouldn't identify who said this, and I don't even know offhand, but they said, if I had to label our needs regarding Common Core, the label would read Emergency 911. And so I would kind of agree with that in terms of where, you know, how I would like to help the superintendent move us a little bit quicker along this path. And so, um, I, there is not, I'm already past the amount of money now at this point that we have available. So, but those are my recommendations. The ESS science teacher and, uh, the multiple days, well, the days of professional development and that kind of time are also both in the, are two of the items in the information Mr. Gibb shared with me. I think he had identified, one of his items had identified about a targeted professional development for $150,000. And that was, again, that was just one of the items, but I did want to indicate the overlap of two of these items with Mr. Gibb's information to me. So those will be my strong recommendations for you to consider as you do your ranking tonight.
Can I ask a question regarding D, the curriculum adoption? Now, is the $30,000 just for the math and the $20,000 just for the writing or English? Or, you know, how does that, how does the funding of the estimate cost play out as far as what we can actually do with these two, four, five priorities?
Well, the $20,000 for writing is covered already, you'll notice the excess to the right in the Common Core implementation grant. But, but, does that help? I'm not sure.
Thank you.
With a little variance, I went through this and ranked mine as well, and we were pretty well aligned. So I want to just give you that feedback that I, you know, I appreciate what you did. I had the science teacher ranked high. I had the special ed ranked very high, and I think we're really on the same page here, so thank you.
So, um, before we go into ranking, I, I did have some, uh, I guess overarching comments and thoughts on, on this presentation, which was very helpful. And, uh, I guess, um, we already dealt with some of the, some of the, some of the number issues, but, um, so the estimated costs on A and B, you know, I think are less than 103 because we ought to count the $20,000 or so that the Title I is going towards that, and in B, we ought to count the, um, what we're paying out for the aid. On the, the math implement, um, the math adoption and the special ed, uh, I agree, those are, those are both priorities and that I think we got to do them now. However, I, I think those are base grant, parcel tax core dollars, which, you know, I mean, I know they're used up, but I, like, I don't think those are supplemental concentration. I think that should be part of our core program funding. So, I, I, and we ought to figure out, um, you know, how, how and when and if to do that. And, and that's a reason why really we should, we should have been having this conversation about a month ago so that we had the time to kind of think about that with our documentation. I had, uh, um, on the professional development, I guess I, um, know that we have the Common Core implementation grant. Do we, do we have none of that money? I mean, we did set aside a third or so of it for Common Core professional development. Have we assigned that already? We don't have any for that, so that's one. Let me just go through a few more items. And the, um, yeah, the, the family resource person, I, it's important, but I guess I'm just really hopeful we're going to get the San Francisco Foundation grant. We got really good signs from the program officer when we all met with her, uh, a month or so ago, that they were, wanted to support that. That's more commentary. And the, I guess the last comment was on the Spanish-speaking bilingual parent liaison. In my mind, it's exactly as Mr. Gibb described it, as I've heard it. It's not just for this Latino or Spanish-speaking community, it is to engage the whole parent community and prove our, and for which we need that person to be bilingual, at least in Spanish. So that's kind of, and I don't know if 30,000 is enough for that. And it might be, you know, maybe it's not a professional management position, but it might be that we need to attract someone for a little more than that.
Right, and I, and I might just add to what I said because I, I realize I didn't say, just, there are so many things on this list that are important. And, and I think, you know, I appreciate the input from the community and the teachers. So I certainly hope my recommendations don't negate the importance of those things. And I wouldn't disagree with you about your last comment that it, we may need to look at more money in that recommendation for that parent, person, that parent liaison, bilingual parent liaison position. And that might be a good one to earmark as a top priority going into year two. Of the four recommendations I've made so far, I'm at 290 to 350,000 dollars. So there is some Common Core money implementation left. I believe it's $40,000 left. So, you know, I'm, I'm making this recommendation knowing that it doesn't all fit already, and so, um,
Say that again, it's how much?
What I'm at now, or what's in Common Core. I believe it's $40,000 remaining in professional development. And, sorry.
No. No, although, um, I respect memory at Phil's comments, um, to the extent of, from my understanding, the supplemental and concentration dollars are for is to actually enhance, you know, those students in this, under these demographics, low income and EL, and help support, you know, those students to become proficient and get them, you know, above or at and below, and above grade level. So, I mean, to, to your point, as far as some of these, as far as, you know, yeah, we can, if, if we have the money, support them with, you know, base dollars, but I wouldn't say that they're, they are not under the category and could not be funded with the supplemental and concentration dollars, especially the RTI. And actually, the science teacher as well, because what we want to do, we want to get students to a certain point, you know, if we're going to be a quote-unquote STEM, you know, with a, um, well, right, and with the thrust of technology, I mean, we need, if we're going to be that, we need to have those teachers here for that. And we don't have that, and we can't afford it with the base that we have. So, um, you know, I think it's just, we have to kind of pick what's the most important based on what direction the district wants to go into, so, or, you know, go forward.
Let me be a little clear. Um, the, you're correct. Given our concentration of unduplicated pupils being over 55%, we, um, can, in fact, really doesn't matter on your concentration, you just, your showing needs to be, you know, greater, the lower your concentration. But you could have 10% concentration and spend your money on a district-wide program. So we, we clearly can do that, and at our concentration level, you know, I, I agree with you. We, we don't have a second high school science teacher. I think it's an appropriate use to add that service with our supplemental concentration dollars because we couldn't get it any other way. And it meets the regulatory definition as long as we describe in our LCAP how that service serves unduplicated pupils' goals in our LCAP, which we should be able to do. So that's, I was pulled out two in particular that I think, uh, should be considered part of our core program that is base dollar funding and not invade our supplemental concentration. And those two are number one. Our basic Common Core curriculum adoption materials, like, that's, that, we just got to do that for kids. That's not a supplemental thing. And special ed, I think anything on special ed, we need to do, and we are under federal obligation to do. And we got to find a way to do that with our core dollars and not our supplemental concentration.
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments in response to the board's, um, discussion. I would say there's still, um, and I'm not sure how we're going to do this between now and Wednesday, but there's, um, there's still some areas that staff needs to think about. I think the board should still go through the prioritization exercise. And let me just, as a way of example, not to influence you, although Dr. Ruben and I have talked, and I totally support the areas he's identified. Not just based on the conversations we have, but based upon what I've observed when I was here three years ago. But, for example, professional development, which is really critical, particularly in terms of where we are today. The district does receive other sources of funding that could be used for professional development. What happens in a lot of districts is they get whether it's Title III money or, you know, other sources of funding, say, from the base grant that is set aside for professional development, which usually is enough. But if you combine all the sources of dollars that may be available for professional development, one of the things that's very clear is that districts never have enough resources to be able to do all the professional development they want. So in, uh, in most places I've been, there is a annual plan for professional development. And you look at all the sources of funding and you say, what are your priorities for professional development this year? And you ensure that every dollar available to you for PD is only spent on those priorities. Not on a bunch of other stuff that'd be nice to do, nice to have and all that, but because you don't have unlimited dollars, you take every dollar that could be identified for PD and you focus on the identified priorities. So my point is, we haven't really had a chance to go through that exercise, at least since I've been here. And Dr. Ruben has been here less, fewer days than I have. But I think that the staff will try to go back and look at, okay, so where is there dollars in the core, in the basic, in the base grant that is, has been used for PD, and how can that be used to meet, let's say, that priority so that there isn't as much of the supplemental and concentrated grant being used? so that there isn't as much of the supplemental and concentrated grant being used? Same goes for instructional materials, for the adoption costs. And, you know, and then there's the whole issue that, you know, we use court, uh, we use the base grant, for example, if there is insufficient materials for students at a, in a particular grade level, for a particular subject, because required to make sure that all students have sufficiency of instructional materials. So I know that every year, we're ordering additional books to fill in the gaps for books that have been lost, damaged, otherwise no longer able to be used in order to meet the Williams requirement. So, you know, we need to look at all those sources in the base grant that are paying for many of these things. But that really is going to require a, from my point of view, a line-by-line analysis of the current general fund dollars to really see how those dollars are spent. And, um, in the ideal world, that would have been the process that would answer some of the questions the board members have tonight. It's not something that can't be done during the summer or early fall. And then the board can make, as the process allows revisions to the LCAP plan, to realign where the dollars are spent. But we just, you know, given the staff and given, and I've shared with the board when I was here before, there is more to be done in this district than you have staff to do it. And so consequently, with all due respect to Mr. Gibb's comments, if things are, tend to be on the later side than earlier, it's because staff is juggling multiple projects at the same time, trying to meet a variety of stakeholder expectations. And I, and, and I'm, I could say this because I don't have vested interest in this, because June thirtieth, you know, always nice to help you guys. So I, I, I'm the best person to say this. I'm gonna tell you that demands on the existing staff you have are not realistic. They don't have the bandwidth. And, and I'm not, and I'm, I'm not into excuses, okay? This is not excuse. Just to use Mr. Gibb's words, it's the reality. It's the facts. You don't have the staff that has the bandwidth and you're getting too used to people coming in every Saturday on their own time to put in work. We know that this last year's senior class had a very high percentage of students who got in four-year college university. And that's because Ms. Allen and some other staff came in on Saturdays, I don't know, three fourths, three Saturdays a month, and worked with individual students to help them go through the process. I don't know if the board knew, knew that or knows that. So, so I'm, I'm, it's important for a district to have high expectations, but you can't, you have to think about the bandwidth your staff has because you're gonna burn people out. And, and when I say you, I'm, please don't tell, I'm not saying board, but we're a small district. But we have to meet the same requirements that every other district does. When I came, and I didn't come from a huge district my last round. Dublin had five thousand kids. But we had four times more staff. And so when things came down the road, we had more flexibility for people to kind of drop this and work on other things. Everything we do here seems to have the same level of urgency and importance and you don't have the horses to pull the wagon. So I just want the board at least to be sensitive to that as you move forward. I think that the effort that was put in on this, I think Ms. Allen was having to do it all by herself, basically. There's no other staff to help her with this. And so, you know, there's been a lot of time put into this. There's been a lot of activity put into this in the last two months. And we think for that, that this basically is a very good plan. I want to thank Board Member Atfeld for his comments because I think the comments that he submitted in response to this are very good suggestions. Many of those things we can actually take care of in the revision Monday morning. We've blocked out our schedule Monday morning to make some of the things that you had suggested that we can actually correct. I think the one thing we can't do realistically between on Wednesday is to tell the whole story. We, we had a goal to try to capture everything that the base grant is doing, basically everything the district is doing. And to capture that in this plan, I personally think that's a good idea. The county said, well, we're not requiring that. That's, you know, we don't know. Next year it may be required, but we're not requiring that. But I think for the benefit of the community and the stakeholders in the community, I think it's a good idea. And it's good for us because then we'll know where every dollar is spent. We should know that more than anybody. But it's not something we can do and get the plan to the county in time for the June thirtieth deadline. But it's certainly something that I think the staff will look at as, as we move forward through the summer into the early fall. So, um, I'm, I'm sorry that I took longer than I did, but I think that because this is so important, I want to make sure the board understood why maybe it wasn't perfect. There are some gaps. We could certainly have done some things better. But I think, given the reality of where we are with the staff and the time we have, we think that this is our best effort. We think it meets the requirements that the county has, um, expressed to us. And, um, we just need board direction on what it is you want to fund for next year so that we can build that and make the revisions to the general fund budget that you will be presented next Wednesday. With all of us understanding that the process does allow for revisions and either new sources of funding are identified or we have greater carryover than we anticipated or we actually realign base grant dollars, for example, like on the professional development piece, so that we can come back to you maybe in August and say, you know what? We can redirect twenty thousand of parcel tax money to handle PD in this area. So we're reducing that, um, liability, if you will, to the supplemental grants. So board, let's have a meeting and let's talk about the other things that you would like to fund with that extra money. We're hoping that that will be where we'll be able to be sometime in the early fall.
And I'll just add very quickly, I will be going line-by-line through the budget. I haven't been able to complete that yet. But that will be something I'm doing in the beginning of July because I want to know how every single staff member is funded, where those funds are coming from. So I can try to figure out how is it, how is it possible that we have, we're running a budget deficit that I think is actually approaching five hundred thousand, uh, a year? And so I need to understand that. And so I'll be going through that to your comments to understand why is it, why is it that I'm having to actually prioritize that in this budget and I can't right now be able to do that elsewhere? So as far as I know.
So as, as I ask you to go through this exercise, I'm gonna tell you how to do it. I want you to also, though, make sure you have the mindset that this is not about what we're wanting to fund and what we're not wanting to fund. It's about, probably you want to fund all of it, if you could. But it's, it's for the dollars you have available now, what are the things that are most important for you to fund for next year? With the caveat that there may be other monies identified, there could be monies redirected to meet some of these priorities. But for the purposes of board approval of the general fund budget next week and the approval of the LCAP plan, we think the board needs to do this exercise tonight. So the way that we've designed this is, we want you individually to take this sheet and put down your priority next to each item. And the priority that you're gonna assign to each item is, number one means high priority, two means medium priority, and three means low priority. And of course, that's relative. I don't mean to say that low priority means you don't think it's important, but relative to the other items. And so you put a one, two, or three next to each item. There's only twenty-two items, so, so it shouldn't take you too long. When each board member's completed with that, then we're going to take an average score from the five of you and we're gonna write that score up next to the items up on the chart there. And that way then the board will be able to see whether, how much consensus there is among the board around some of the items and, and, you know, conversely, how much divergence there is among the board members on some of the items. And hopefully this exercise will at least identify the top items. And then the board, I would suggest the board have a conversation about the relative merits of those, those items. Particularly if they end up costing more than two hundred and forty-one thousand.
Can I ask a quick question for items? See on the first page under goal one, that's, that's addition or is that to maintain our counselor? Okay, okay.
Is that for, and I, I had the same question. Is that for ESS or is that for, or is that district-wide?
It's, it's both. It could go either way. So there's been comments about the counselor being a sixth through twelfth grade, like adding another one. But there's also been one using the counselor more as an administrative, um, person because you have high demands on two principals without any admin support.
Okay, thank you. So that's, that's a vice principal almost?
Basically. So basically what a counselor has what you call a PPS credential and they can do administrative duties up to a vice principal.
Okay, so, um, unless there are other questions at the, we'll take, let's take a, let's, let's do this as just, let's just say this is the first pass-through on an effort to prioritize. If, if we have some problems with it, we can regroup and I've got other ways in which we can do this. But let's, 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 uh, let's try it this way. But the most you only have a forty percent.
I'm just saying, if I, if I go with the, the science teacher, have I covered the AP, the two more AP?
One AP and one elective perhaps, or two AP, no additional electives, or perhaps two electives. Electives would be academic electives, they're not, it, it would be electives in the core area, not.
I'm just saying, is that the same item effectively?
It can be, right.
All right. It is in my mind. So, so, so I don't want to rank the AP one at all. For me, I don't want to confuse people.
Well, I would say that if, if the science was a high priority, you'd probably be wasting a vote if you then also ranked the AP slash elective item.
For the full-time tech teacher, is this NE8 or ESS? Tech teacher. NE8, okay.
Okay? And we're just gonna go down from the top, from the first page. So the first one is provide a full-time PE teacher at NE8. I need to know your scores.
Three.
One?
Three.
Three.
One.
Three.
Three.
That is thirteen. Divided by five is two point six. So, uh, okay, it's, it's there. All right. Provide a full-time technology teacher.
Two.
Two.
One.
Two.
Three.
That is two point oh. Okay, the next item is counselor to provide college guidance or administration support.
Two.
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 Three.
That's two point two. Next item is, um, now the writing is covered, so it's actually the mathematics pilot implementation.
One.
Two.
Unrated.
Zero.
Okay?
One.
Three. I'm sorry, one, sorry.
Can we, can we do that over again?
Yeah. If you give it a zero, that's a really good score.
I know, you're right. Ten.
President Dice.
I'm sorry, two.
No, same thing, same item.
Two.
Zero.
Well, I guess I have to give it a, uh, four. The, the numbers are inverse, right? I mean, that's, that's a problem. So your two point oh is better than two point six.
That's correct.
So that's why I give it a four.
So that's a three.
Right.
So, so we have one, two, three.
One.
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 One. One point six.
I, I have an objection to, you've heard my objection.
Objection sustained.
I was gonna say, you should've said noted. Should've been noted. Your sustaining is zero.
Item E, provide two more AP or, and, and or elective classes.
Now, see, I didn't vote on that one because of the science teacher.
Pick a number.
So then it's a three?
Okay.
One.
Well, okay, all right, all right, all right, okay. One.
One. He flipped it. He went to one.
Well, because.
See, Dr. Su Yim is giving conflicting instructions here. We could rate it as three. I mean, it should just be combined with the high school science thing.
Just, just assume that they're basically both tied together.
Okay, if that's, okay.
Programatically, Dr. Balthus, will that work?
Okay.
All right. Then let's pass on that item then and assume that it is by the board's intention part of the full-time science teacher, uh, item. Okay, then the next item is purchase Chrome laptops with thirty.
You skipped professional development.
Oh, I'm sorry, professional development? Remember, Dwayne?
Yeah, so I have, I mean, are we gonna come back with the dollars in Common Core with this item?
I think we're gonna have to come back on a couple of things because we don't, you know, even the items such as a teacher's salary or, we're, I'll be coming back regardless.
Okay, okay. Um, one.
I put two.
One.
One.
Two.
That's one point four. Okay, the next item is Chromebooks, purchase, uh, Chrome, carts with Chromebooks at ninety-five hundred each.
One.
Three.
Two.
Two.
Two, for an average of two.
That is two point oh. Purchase student information assessment data system.
Two.
One.
Two.
Two.
One.
Eight divided by five. Somebody counted it up. Eight divided by five.
One point six.
Purchase college guidance curriculum.
Item C, item C, correct? Okay, item C, purchase college, college guidance curriculum, technology and materials.
Two.
One.
Two.
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 One point eight, okay. Item D, provide work experience and/or internship experiences for students.
One.
One.
Three.
Two.
One.
One point six.
One point six. Item E, to engage in second-step positive action and piecemaker curriculum.
Three.
One.
Two.
Three.
Three.
Two point four, okay. Item A, provide parent workshops and training.
One.
Three.
One.
Three.
Three.
Two point two. Item B, provide appropriate and equitable facilities for all organized, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, no, I'm sorry. That one's funded. Item C, operate a, a district school attendance review board and school attendance review team at each school site.
Isn't that funded?
Oh, I'm sorry, one second.
Out of the base grant?
My phone is out. Anna Creek, can I use you, can we use your phone? Or do you have another calculator?
No light, is the light?
I did that one. We did have to do that.
I didn't do that, well.
I didn't do it.
Do we have to do?
Can we, just keep, keep going because we can do the math pretty.
Oh, okay.
We've got a pattern established.
Somebody ready?
Were we supposed to do, I didn't do C at the top of this.
Okay, item C, somebody's doing them, who's doing the math?
No, no.
Do we have to do C?
Do we have to do C at all? Shouldn't there be Xs there? It says it's funded out of the base grant.
Oh, I apologize, base grant. Is that, is that correct?
I had it one.
Well, no, it's fifteen hundred dollars actually.
Out of the base grant. It says base grant.
That, that's an error on our part.
Oh, okay.
So the error is, is not the lack of Xs.
Oh, we have, we have a cover, so skip it. Okay. Okay, sorry. Section B, item A, and how are we doing the math though? Okay, once, I'll wait till you get there. Providing a full-time science teacher.
One.
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 Two.
Five. One point two. You have it for, you wanna handle the math one?
She's a mad person anyway.
Okay. Item B, provide a stipend or bonus pay to staff for data analysis and evaluation.
Three.
One.
Two.
Two.
Two. It's an average of two.
Two point oh. Item C, provide educational specialist, education specialists access to general education for intervention services through response to instruction and intervention.
One.
One.
Objection, ten. Count it how you want it.
I'm gonna give it a zero to counter his ten. One.
So that is total of seven, seven divided by five. One point four. Item D, supplemental reading materials for acceleration intervention English learners and students with special needs.
Two.
One.
Two.
One.
One.
Seven divided by five.
One point two.
One point two. Thank you. Item A, provide hourly pay to staff for after-school tutoring and test prep.
The last one, seven divided by five is one point four.
Don't make me nervous, Dwayne. I'm depending on you for numbers. Okay. Provide hourly pay, is that where we're at, item A, for staff for after-school tutoring and test prep for intervention?
One.
Two.
Three.
One.
One. That's one point six.
One point six. Provide a part-time family resource coordinator.
Two.
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 Three.
Two point two. For English language learners, provide a part-time ELL teacher.
One.
One.
Two.
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 One point six, provide a full-time teacher and two instructional aids for English language development.
Already budgeted. Just a bold one.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you very much. Item F, provide a Spanish-speaking bilingual parent liaison.
Three.
One.
Two.
Two.
Three.
Eleven.
Two point two.
Two point two. Item G, provide translation services in Spanish.
Three.
One.
That is something we're already doing, right? That's something you explained.
We are.
Yeah, so.
I'll miss that.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm not gonna vote for that one also. It's, it's not an increase or improvement. Maybe, maybe we're not paying, but I mean, it's not a new increased service. So, either we pay for it out of base or.
Alright, you don't have to make that one.
Okay.
With base grant money.
Okay.
That was the last one.
Yeah, the general fund, the base grant is covering the current year cost for that, and we'll just roll that amount over to next year.
Okay. That was the last one.
I mean, we should be doing it.
So Ms. Allen, as you look at the list there, so the highest priority items have the lowest number, the lowest number you can have is one, so are there any items where all five board members gave value one so that the score is one point oh?
No.
Okay, how about one point two?
We have a couple.
Do you mind circling those with maybe blue, blue pen, okay. Anything else with one point two? Okay, how about one point four?
Can you, can you circle?
Okay, if you can circle those.
Thank you, Vanna.
Just a process question, Dr. Sugiyama. At this point, since we've gone beyond the budget, do we want to change colors as we think about the next year?
So we covered one point four, how about one point six?
Kinda hard to see that one.
I was feeling bad about having to go last on everything, I'm feeling good because I can see it no problem from here.
That, that color, I know, Ms. Allen, I do appreciate your circling, don't get me wrong, but can, can we re-circle those in a darker color? Because I think it's hard for the board members to see, is that correct?
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I think at this point, we've greatly exceeded the budget, and so maybe what we could do is give you guys a chance to reorganize with the priorities. Sort of that one point two, the one point four, the one point six on a single page while we go into closed session.
Well, I, I think what we can do is to assume that we're gonna build the one point twos in the plan and in the budget. But what possibly we can do on Monday is we can see if some of the other items might be able to be covered through redirection of base grant money.
Okay.
But they'll still be part of the plan because the county is saying, you know, if you're gonna address a state priority and you're funding it, whether it's continuing, existing funds or new funds, they like to see that in the plan. Do we go far enough, I guess is the question? Okay, so there's one more item at one point eight, and then after that, it goes into two point oh?
Fair.
Do you want us to take a look at the one point eight item as well in terms of existing resources?
Yes, it's only five thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's five thousand dollars.
I would say yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I want to reiterate, I, I, I'm not comfortable spending a dollar on special ed of supplemental concentration funds and a common core basic adoption, and so I can be, you know, obviously overruled on this, but I, I would urge you to also go back and see if you can find between the, the base grant and our core operating and our parcel tax, other resources to cover those items.
But remember, I felt, I, I thought I heard staff say that C, the RTI, was not for special ed.
That is correct, and that's what I was, that's exactly what I was gonna ask, clarification. So C is not for special ed, it's for general ed students. So is that, I mean, I just want to get clarification in terms of what your thinking is, member Alfeld.
I see. And I felt the same way about the supplemental materials, I perceive those more for the RTI and the ELL students.
That is correct.
Than the special ed, they just sort of, you know, they get carried along.
Yeah, I think a few meetings ago, the, the main reason why we have, we want to emphasize students with special needs or special ed is because one of our parents who was on the district advisory committee emphasized that I just want to make sure that the students don't get lost in the shuffle as well.
I think that the issue of the funding for special ed is a little problematic because the special ed, total special ed budget is not sufficient to cover the cost of special ed as it is, so it does encroach on the general fund, so we, we, I mean, we could beat the bushes, but we know what the SALP is gonna allocate to our district next year with six oh two funds, and basically, there is a general fund contribution to ensure maintenance of effort. So, there are too many, I guess what I'm saying is there really isn't much of an option in, for that item.
And the other reason why I ranked it so high is because I remember, I don't know, maybe three or four months ago, Ms. Lewis, Tracy Lewis came up to the podium and said, and she actually pleaded to the board to get more intervention for those grade levels. So, I mean, there's definitely, that came from a teacher, so there has to be a need.
And I, I just need some direction from the board because I also need to make sure I understand, I'm not sure I understand, member Alfeld's, Alfeld's comments. Are we, are we proceeding to, are we going to proceed in the process we're engaged in tonight in terms of ranking, or are you suggesting something there? I, I just need some clarification from member Alfeld or the board. I'm not sure I understood what you were just saying. So, we just went through a process where we ranked, where the board has ranked these, are you suggesting that, that the board is not gonna continue to, in, in this process tonight?
I was making a comment on the ranking, which I understood to be the, the next step in this process, not let's add up the numbers and go.
And then have a qualitative conversation about the, the relative numerical rankings, so.
And, and as part of that conversation, I, I don't feel comfortable spending, you know, sixty-eight thousand of, of, of that money on, I think we absolutely should continue to provide the service, but I don't think it, out of supplemental concentration dollars. As a source. And you're correct, that, that, that we shouldn't be spending special ed funds on this. But, that means, I mean, we have been providing these as part of our, you know, core operating, it's not a new increased or improved service, it is.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree very strongly with member Alfeld because I feel like this is exactly what we want to do. We're gonna take general ed funds and start targeting kids who are behind in grade level, which means we're gonna hit our ELLs, we're gonna hit our free and reduced lunch, we're gonna hit our foster youth, and we're gonna really provide them extra RTI support from people who happen to be special ed teachers but are gonna be acting as a general ed teacher. And the goal is twofold, one, to get them on grade level, and two, to keep them off of an IEP. And to me, that's exactly what we're doing here, we're targeting these students. Am I, did I say that correctly?
That is correct, so it's not a service that is already provided. What it is, is that it's a hit or miss. So if you have a teacher who happens to have.
Okay, let me stop you right there. My understanding was, and I could be mistaken, that we, and I support exactly this model, and it, and it was explained very well to us by Dr. Steele, and, and, and we had this discussion about special ed versus. I understood that we had some compliance issues based on what we have done up to date with, with special ed dollars we have been spending on this service, and now we are supplanting those dollars with supplemental concentration. Now, if that's not what's happening, in fact, we're adding services, then.
You're adding a service, what you're mixing up is learning center versus RTI. Learning center is the model that Dr. Steele has presented before you, that you heard also from Ken Wyatt prior to that and Sue Taylor, and where Mina Hutchins started. So that's, learning center is very different from RTI. What the teachers and what Ms. Lewis came up earlier in the year is that in order to do intervention services, this is what they've tried to do, but the, but the learning center model has to push back on that. What we want to provide is strictly a strong RTI framework and a model, and that's what we don't have, and it will be an additional, additional service. Currently, we have what you call learning center, and in the learning center model, you kind of do some kind of hit or miss, but it's not a process that is very, that's, that's very thorough, which is why we started to implement response to instruction and intervention.
So maybe you could clarify, Dr. Rubia, what the correspondence you were referring to earlier with the state about, about the use of these dollars?
Well, and I, I don't know that I have everything, I don't know that I understand the situation entirely, but, but if we have a model where we have one teacher who is able to provide services to students who are not special ed students, and we have other available teachers who, our, our model is wanting to do that, and, and I don't know to what extent that's been happening or not, and I think that if I understand the RTI model we're proposing, and I may have misspoke earlier by calling, because it's also a learning center model, I believe. But, the extent to which, and I think Ms. Allen means hit or miss, the extent to which we've been doing that, and I don't, and I don't know to what extent, we, if I understand the problem correctly, we cannot do that. We can't continue to do it for any students, and we certainly can't do it for every, each of the four teachers on a regular basis without being in a predicament with compliance, if I understand, if I understand the situation.
Yeah, so let me, let's see if I can clarify this. Dr. Steele was told by a special ed consultant that in order for teachers, special ed teachers in the learning center to go into the regular classroom and provide services to non-special education students, but they're targeted students who are not meeting standard, they are probably almost always fall in the low-income student group. That in order to do that, the teachers who provide that service have to have some funding from non-special ed funds or from general ed funds. Prior to, or in the current year, one teacher, forty percent of her salary is paid for from Title I funds, and the students who are non-special ed receiving her services are eligible, are Title I eligible students. So we don't have a compliance issue there. I, part of what I understand is this item came up as a priority on the list in light of the site council at NE8s wanting to redirect those Title I monies in order to support the potential of covering part of the salary of a technology teacher and a PE teacher. So Dr. Steele's belief was if the Title I funds are not gonna be available, it would prohibit the special ed teachers from serving any non-special ed students, and, which defeats the whole purpose of the learning center concept. So.
I now understand, that's part of the problem. So originally, it was, originally, RTI was already on the table from cabinet. And then on top of it, then the issue when, when, when the school site wasn't necessarily funding the one RSP teacher with Title I, that became another issue. So it's not necessarily that it goes, it goes together because one issue came up before the other, but the twenty-five percent RTI was an issue from September. So we've had meetings with, with the learning team center, Ms. Lathan, et cetera, how can we provide more intervention to teachers? This, the, the Title I issue came up later when Dora started to create the budget, and wanted to know like how should she create the budget and where the Title I funds come in, then come in, and that came in as a separate, second issue, so it was just basically a compounded issue. So, it, it was always in, we always wanted to address RTI because it wasn't done in a manner that it needs to be. Learning center is more, how do you have students, how do you have your special needs students push into classrooms? So your teachers are actually coming in and pushing in, providing support for your special ed teachers. RTI is very different, different process or framework or model. So I think what's happened is that they both are mixed up, but it was trying to figure out how come we solve all these problems, you know, are the two conditions under, you know, with LCAP.
So, and Dr. Potts may be actually, because of his professional position, may know the answer to this, but at least from my experience, when I was previously involved in special ed, when I was a director of special ed, we, that, we were moving toward a full inclusion model, and in that model, it was touted, one of the reasons why that model was touted was because it would provide the special ed teacher and the aide the ability to work with non-special ed students in the regular classroom. And as I recall, I don't recall that it required that part of the funding for the special ed teacher come from general fund as opposed to special ed funds. So, so we called the State Department Special Ed Division, and there was no one there who can give me the answer to my very basic question. can give me the answer to my very basic question. The basic question is, can a special ed teacher who goes into the regular classroom provide services to non-special ed students as well as special ed students? And I could not believe that I couldn't find a consultant there who could answer what I consider a very basic question of funding. It's a compliance issue. They are still researching it. They said they would get back to me, but the person I talked to said he needs to find someone else in the department who can answer that question. It's been two days, and I haven't heard back. So, I don't, maybe Dr. Potts, since he works in that area, might know the answer to that, not to put him on the spot, but...
I'm just smiling because I love the idea that we're saying a special ed teacher isn't paid out of general ed funds, and the only time I ever hear that conversation is usually going the other way when we talk about special ed encroachment. Special ed teachers are paid out of general ed funds. It's part of the whole package. There is, there is an issue, I think, when we talk about this particular model, it's not, I'm providing this service, of course, I can help a child who's sitting next to me. Here, we're really designating students, and I would think of it more as, if a five-period day is what a teacher at a high school teaches, three of those periods, they're dealing with students with IEPs and meeting those IEP needs and goals, and IEPs are all about getting kids into general ed classes. That fourth, that fifth period, or fourth and fifth period, they're pulling kids out to do intensive individualized instruction, and if you do that with a special ed teacher, without an IEP, you're violating that family's rights and a bunch of issues beyond just the federal funding issues, because that service should not be available. Once you start designating them as instructional specialists and they're providing secondary supports, it becomes a general ed function, and it's available to all kids. And that's what they're, that's what you're talking about, and that is taking those two periods a day. What we have right now are four fully staffed special ed teachers who have a dream caseload of very, very low numbers. Any other, so if you think about it in class size, they're doing three periods of special ed when they should have ten kids in their class, and they really have closer to five. And so, instead of finding more special ed kids or getting rid of a teacher, we're gonna give them an extra class, and they're gonna see five or ten general ed kids. These are the ways I'm, I'm picturing this in my head. Am I getting this, I'm getting a lot of nods from that table, is that helping Mr. Afelt at all to think about it in those terms? So, what we're, what we're actually doing is taking away from the special ed kids, their ratios are gonna go up, but these teachers are gonna start serving, you know, more children who are not yet identified as having a disability, and hopefully, we never will.
And that is my understanding.
Are we pulling them out, or are we service, serving them in class?
I think it's gonna be both, right?
It's a combination again.
And are we doing that already this year, or are these additional...
It will be additional. So, currently, right now, some, some teachers, they try to, but they're, but because of the way the funding is or the structure, and this is what we've been talking with Dr. Steele, Slathan, et cetera, is that it happens, some teachers may do it if they have time, but it's not a structured system. That's why we're trying to move to an RTI where it's very structured. So, depending on the child's needs, in terms of intense intervention, you may, if you have enough students in a certain specific skill, you may actually like pull five of them and you do intense intervention, or it may be more beneficial to push in and gather the four or three in a small group with, in the classroom. So, it really depends on the needs and what comes out in the assessments, and when you do formative assessments constantly with those students, who, and it's particularly for those students who are not meeting those benchmarks.
So, the, to complexify it somewhat, if forty thousand dollars of this problem was generated because the site council wanted to spend Title I dollars on two other priorities, which, which some of us ranked high, but in general, did not get highly ranked, how does that implicate this item?
That is a good question. So, I think part of it has to do with what the site council's authority is to approve the use of Title I funds. And I don't know, Ms., I'm not even...
Well, I know the answer to that, and, and they, ultimately, it's a recommendation that the board can accept or reject, and typically, boards almost always accept, but the board is empowered to reject their recommendations, say, we're gonna spend it differently, and I believe you have to identify in writing and explain to the site council why you did that. But the board ultimately decides how to spend the Title I money.
So, assuming that that is the case, and I don't have any reason to doubt that that's not the case, then we could assume that since none of those two, neither the two positions that the site council was going to allocate, or redirect Title I funds for next year, which means that the forty thousand Title I monies are available, but of course, Dr. Steele's, part of her concern also is being able to serve more students, more targeted students. So, you could say that if the forty thousand went and was restored, that provided the ed specialist to serve targeted but non-special ed students, the, the cost, the twenty percent cost of sixty-three, sixty-eight thousand could actually be reduced, reduced a ten percent or half that cost to thirty-four thousand, which would increase the capacity of those four teachers to serve more students who are not, who do not have IEPs. And I think, the only reason why I think this is so important, besides, you know, the concept of learning center, is that Anna Yates, for as great a job as the teachers do there, they have very little way of intervention programs. And so, but if you have, if you're a student with an IEP because you're eligible for special ed, you do get services from special ed teachers, but it's the other students who don't meet the eligibility requirements for special ed who are coming from the targeted groups and who are not meeting standard that we're asking the regular classroom teachers to differentiate instruction, to attempt to address the needs of those students, and it's a challenge for them to do it on their own. And so, this is where the educational specialist can be helpful, because if I'm a classroom teacher, and I, I'm doing English Language Arts, and I've broken my class into three small groups based upon the needs that groups have, but there may be those three, four, or five students who need more intensive support, that the special ed teachers in my classroom and/or the aide, they can provide the targeted support to those students that I'm not going to be able to get to. So, when you have a school that doesn't have a wide range, doesn't have a lot of intervention programs, and we're asking teachers differentiate in order to meet the needs of students who are not meeting standards, it's very difficult for a regular classroom teacher to do that without some support. So, Dr. Steele's hope is that we can expand the ability of the ed specialist to be able to serve a larger number of students who don't have IEPs. So, if, if the board were inclined to say, okay, we think the Title I money should be redirected back to support that effort in order to increase the capacity to address more students, I would still recommend that, that half, instead of twenty percent of their time, ten percent of their time be supported from supplemental concentrated grants, which would expand their ability significantly to address the needs of more students, and the cost would be, well, would cost would be half of sixty-eight thousand.
But do we know that the school site council may not come back and, you know, have another priority with that forty thousand dollars, you know, that they have freed up now? See, I know, we don't know. That would be the issue. We do. So, I mean, that's just a thought. I mean, but as member Afelt said, we always have the authority to overrule and, you know, put those dollars toward that, toward that use.
Let me be clear, I think we should honor the site council's...
I agree.
I agree.
So, until we know if they're gonna be prioritized, I think we move on.
You know, I just have to add, I think the challenge here is that we have an LCAP, we have an SSC, we have a number of, you know, places or priorities or even wants, I mean, and desires. So, I think we can only do as much as we can, and I don't think the, I mean, I, I agree with what you said. I think in most instances, we, we have the ability to do it, but when we're faced with a list of twenty-three things, it just may be the case that some things don't shake out to be in favor of the recommendation that's been, you know, provided to the board. So, I, I agree. I mean, I, I just wanted to say that. I do agree, but I think we do have a challenge in front of us where we have a number of things. And just from a philosophical standpoint, for me, in terms of how I ranked a lot of these things and those two positions, one of them is that I think in some instances, it's more of a, it could be a management issue as it relates to PE, and it could be another resource that we haven't looked at. And I think a lot of it has to do with considering where does the, in terms of the tech teacher, why the partial tax couldn't pay for that, but what is it not gonna pay for? I mean, I think that's, so, you know where my thinking was, just as it relates to this prioritization process. So, I think, I mean, that's just, I just had to say that. But, yeah. So, where are we?
So, I think, let me just throw out a thought for board reaction. We do need to revise the LCAP. I think, again, some of the member Afelt's recommendations, we can make the revisions to the LCAP. The, but we need to make revisions to get it ready to present before you for approval next Wednesday in the form and manner that the county is expecting it, which means they want us to take out all the things that are not proposed to be funded or if funding will continue, and we have to make sure we address the eight priorities. So, so, so based on what the consensus was this evening, we may have to go back and add some areas to make sure all eight state priorities are addressed. But the board, and then we have to adjust the general fund budget to reflect the expenditure, proposed expenditures, you know, Mr. Bernay did not put those in the budget draft because the decision hasn't been made yet. The board may consider the adoption of the LCAP plan and then the adoption of the general fund budget with some stipulations. And the stipulations are around the items for which there are still some questions that we just can't possibly answer by Wednesday. And the ed specialist one is an example of one. If the board were to adopt the plan to spend the sixty-eight thousand, for example, to supplement the, the ed specialist compensation so that they legally can address the needs of non-special ed students, that it is approved with the condition that the district look for other sources of funding, including Title I, that can be utilized to increase the level of services, but at the same time, free up supplemental grant money. So, in other words, we can for some of the, and, and the professional development one is a little problematic anyway, because we don't really know what that amount is, and we're not gonna know what that amount is by Wednesday night. Same with the science teacher position, until we actually hire someone, we know what the amount is. So, in some ways, you're approving the proposed action and services at a dollar amount that doesn't exceed two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, so that the county on the fiscal review side will say, okay, district, we're looking at this, and we agree you can afford this, but then the board can make adjustments as soon as clarification is received on some of these items, and it could be certainly as soon as August or September, depends on the item, of course. And at that point, Dr. Rubio and staff could come back to you and say, okay, so in response to the four items the board approved originally, here is the current status of this, here's what the actual real cost is, and is either used all the money or it's freed up some additional funding that the board can now go back and consider the other priorities. But at least it allows to get the plan into the county, get their approval, and then allow the board to make revisions to the plan.
And if there is some money that's freed up and we can fund another priority, we can always do that before first interim.
I would hope that the board can do that much sooner than that, because you're not gonna get the first interim until December.
I said before.
Right, so before. Hopefully, well before.
Well, the county has till August fifteenth to, they do something with the budget by then, right? Don't they approve budgets by August fifteenth?
Forty-five days after, forty-five days after the governor approved the budget.
Yeah.
Right.
They have till August fifteenth to also give us feedback and considerations on the LCAP.
Same time, right?
On those pieces, yes, they're aligned. They have to August, October eighth to finally approve the LCAP one way or another. Presumably, that means they say, hey, did you think about this, that, or the other thing on August fifteenth? And we say, yes, but we're still gonna do what we wanna do, or you're right, we should change that. So, there is a little bit of time before, you know, October eighth, and I, you know, I, now, frankly, I don't, I don't know, I don't think they would object, but I don't, I don't know, you know, you come back and you go, wait a minute, we wanna do this instead of that, can you, it's not kinda built for that, but, but it, I would think that...
I feel like we should be able to do that.
I, I would think so, too.
At least be able to add, as long as it all pencils out.
If it's not a major change to the plan, I don't think that that should be an issue.
So, we have, so you, you know what you're doing with this list?
I think we should recap the list for the purposes of the revisions we make to plan in the budget. But my recommendation to the board is that you direct staff to revise the plan and the general fund budget in accordance with those priorities, with the condition that for each of the items that the board has given a high rating for, maybe with the exception of the full-time science position, because I don't think there's anything particularly tied to that. But I think for, so we have the full-time science teacher, we're looking at blue color, right? Okay. We have, was that the only item at one point two?
That's the only one.
Okay. And then we have provide educational specialist access, we have supplemental reading materials, I think that was a fifteen thousand dollar item. We have the professional development piece. So, I would say for the supplemental reading materials, after Wednesday, staff will go back and look at the budgets to see if there's other sources of dollars that could be used for this besides supplemental concentrating grant. So, I would assume that that would be a condition the board would make in approving this, that staff return to the board to determine whether there's any other base grant money that can be used to purchase these materials for next year. The other item at one point four is the professional development piece, and that goes without saying that you're approving the concept. When we submit it to the county, we will make sure that the amount that is put in the application for the county does not, that the amount passes the fiscal review portion of the reading of the grant, because if we put more in there, on the high side, they'll say, well, you don't have that much money to spend for that. So, but the condition upon that item is for the staff to come back to the board as soon as a clear determination can be made as to the cost, and at the same time, that the staff examine all of the district's base grant money to determine whether there's other dollars that have been used for professional development that could be redirected to address this, which if we find, if we identify those monies, it should free up some supplemental concentrated grant money. So, I think those are the items for which I would recommend the board approve with those conditions, and that staff would bring back updated information.
I guess another question I had is on the, the, for every new staff person, and is it only the science teacher that's new up there? Well, part-time EL teacher is the new, are the two new staff persons?
Oh, the positions.
Yeah, the new positions.
The only staff positions that had an average score of less than two-point-oh...
No, no, I'm just, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Would be the full-time science position.
I think the part-time EL.
Part-time EL teacher. The internship work experience is a stipend, proposed as a stipend position, that's not a personnel position. Those are the only two, actually.
Yeah, so, I mean, those, as you said, are budgeted at the high end of what we would hire someone at.
Yes.
Right. So, I, I don't know what's common, but it seems like... but it seems like the, that in budgeting, you, you put it in the middle or something, or a little towards above the middle, but not always at the high end.
Yeah, and, but I think for the purposes of exercise, since the dollar amount that we have maximum available is a defined dollar amount, just to be safe, we felt it was prudent to, to err on the side of potentially the highest. From, from my personal experience, not just here, but when I was personal director, it's not common to hire someone from the outside who comes in at 10 years of experience and has maximum units, because they are folks who are too vested in their districts, and they tend not to move after 10 years because they're higher up on the salary schedule. Now, if we were, had the highest salary schedule in the whole county, you'd have a greater possibility that you might have a person like that come from another district, because if they get 10 years of credit and they're going to come here and make $8,000, $10,000 more, they may be willing to make that change. We're not one of those districts. So I think if we ask Ms. Harrell, what's, what's been the average placement on the salary schedule for the last 10 teachers we've hired? I would venture guess it's going to be somewhere more in the middle, or the low middle. But we didn't feel comfortable in recommending to the board a dollar amount without knowing for sure, because the next thing that happens, there's a tremendous teacher that is committed to working with our students, wants to come here, and they'll come over for a lateral move in salary, but then it's going to be higher than what we... So, I mean, I think that with the science position, I know Dr. Balf has interviewed a number of people, has a pretty good sense of where they would come in at. And not to put you on the spot, but when you're looking at the candidates and the candidates that are pretty good...
The ones that we've been finding that have the right credential. Actually, we had one turn us down because we couldn't put her high enough on the salary schedule. So... So it's, it's very hard to know. But there, there's a number of them who are out there who have unusual circumstances where they're doing some moving around. And if they've got experience and some education, they're going to come in at the higher end, even if it's not the very top.
And, and at least for that position, since we have to have the teacher in place for the start of school, you'll know probably prior to September 1, what the actual dollar cost is for that position. So it's, you know, it's either you're not going to be able to identify extra money or you will be able to identify extra money, but we ought to know by September 1st.
And I think, I mean, the beauty, the advantage of this kind of exercise is that if we do come in below, then we have some other rankings and some other priorities we can just boom, go ahead and find. So...
I, I do want to share with, with my fellow board members that, that I don't particularly like this list. That it's not, you know, I, I respect it's your priorities. I, I like the science teacher and I, and, you know, I mean, I like everything on this list. But I, I was disappointed not to see greater interest and support in a PE teacher or the tech teacher. We've been hearing also from Ms. Lewis and others...
Other teachers.
That, that we need a PE teacher at, at Annie Yates.
Right.
And that it, it is a drain on our current staff to do that. And we, we've adopted a tech thrust and we don't have a, we don't have a tech teacher. So those are my disappointments.
And just so the board knows, I, I certainly have some strong, why would I say this? I feel very empathetic, I think, because I know the teachers don't have enough time to do everything. And I totally understand the rationale for the requests in the positions, so. And I, and I mean that. I don't know if that was my, it wasn't honestly my first reaction when I heard about some of the positions, but as I've thought about it and heard from more teachers, I do get the sincerity of their feelings that wouldn't it be great to have someone to do that? And it would be, to do some of these other parts of their, their job that are traditionally done by the teacher themselves. So I just wanted to share that, that I, I agree with you with the importance. I'll share one more thing with you, just for added information. I did get a response, again, from 96% of our teachers, K-12, on the number of questions. And one of the questions was, if you had to choose between positions and you had, or you had to choose between professional development that was well done, which would you do? Or which do you think makes more of a difference for student achievement? Straight down the middle, just about 50%, 50%. So I feel like, at the very least, we are, we have a combination of things here tonight. And it's not everything everybody wants, and I wish we could provide that. But we have a combination of, of both. But I did want to let you know that, because I'm, as you know, I feel the need to make sure I get a response from everybody when I ask a particular question. So we have accurate data. So in asking, all teachers in Emory, except for two who have not responded yet. It is pretty split down the middle on that question for, in terms of what will best impact student achievement.
So I guess my question would be to staff to at least take a look at this, is what kind of, you know, I guess maneuvering can we do to somehow get a PE teacher, you know, at Annie Yates? I mean, that would be my ask, because I want to, I want to see a PE teacher there as well. I mean, I'm an ex-athlete. I want to see kids, you know, have physical exercise. So, and that was going to be, you know, really my question, if this position did not get high priority. Is there anything internally that we can, and I'm not asking you to answer it now, more like, you know, if you can go, kind of go back and look at, how can we somehow facilitate a PE teacher?
I'm, I'm hesitant to do that, only because of this reason. I want to be respectful to, so far, unless you're instructing me not to, which I also will do. But I'm assuming at the moment that I'm going to, the staff is going to follow the priorities for us. So if you, if you do a one-off...
I'm not saying additional funding.
No, 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 I know, but I just want to, I just want to communicate that I do also want to be respectful of the process that the entire board just went through. So I just want to caution us that I will do as instructed by the board. But at the same time, I just want to, you know, remind you that we just went through this process. And I don't know whether, if that position is on the next level of priorities, absolutely. I, I have no problem. But I just want to mention that to you, just because while it is important, it is in the conversation space that we're having right now, we could have the same conversation about just about anything on, on the wall. So I just want to be careful about what direction you're giving me. And I want to clarify...
Those priorities were what, what should we do with our supplemental concentration money? And if you had a different question, like, what should we next do with base or grant or something?
I was going to say, with some of the other things that we were talking about, trying to find other resources or other alternatives to fund. That's all I was talking about.
So let, let me speak this, I want to try to say this, so I don't, I'm not committing Dr. Rubio to a particular course of action. But he knows where I live, so. So the only way the board will know this is for the board to participate in an exercise that goes through the general fund budget, department by department, site by site. And for the board to know what's, what you're, I hate to put it in these terms, what you're buying with the dollars you have. Because only when the board does that exercise will you be able to decide, you know what, that's a great program, but quite frankly, we as a board believe we should do this. So we want the staff to make a shift or plan on making a shift of dollars spent for this versus something else. Now, I've been through, well, I've been through many, many budget adoptions. And depending on who's on the board, I get different direction of the board on how to do the study sessions. I have done study sessions where the board actually asked each budget manager to sit in front of the board like a corporate department head would have to go to the board of directors and to justify his or her proposed budget for next year. We did that. We, we did that twice in the prior district I was in. And after doing it two times, the board said, nah, we don't need to do that anymore, because we now know where the money is and where the money's going for. Most boards adopt budgets like the practices here. Your CBO presents, you know, the budget on the revenue side. What are the categories of income? What are the categories for expenditure side? Here's the ending fund balance, the components of the balance. Here's a multi-year projection, where we're going to look. And that's pretty much the common approach most boards take. In this district, because you're small, it would not be a bad idea for the board to be involved in the exercise where you go through the entire base grant in terms of what it's funding, so you know where the dollars are going, particularly in light of some of these other priorities. But, so you can't, so if you're going to make a decision to redirect existing dollars that are all committed, then you'll know, you'll be able to do that in the context of what the board's priorities are for the direction for the district. Obviously in consultation with, with your superintendent. So, you know, again, because the reality of next Wednesday, we have to adopt general fund budget, I think that's an exercise for next year. And the practical reality is, if you decide at some future point to redirect dollars, since 85% to 87% of this district's general fund dollars go for salary and benefits, and you want to change direction on a particular program, you're going to have to give March 15th letters or other ways of releasing staff if that's what it requires to move, you know, to implement new programs. That's not always the case, obviously. Depends on credentials and all of those things, so.
I'd like to, to respond to quite a few things that were said and partly what you said, Afell. Oh, I'm sorry, it is on, I'm just not speaking into it, sorry. Not one of those things do I feel are not important. And I, I struggled with prioritizing, partly because I'm indecisive, but partly because I don't want to say that one thing is more important than the other. But when I, when, when I sit there and I think about what staff has said, I mean, staff have said every single one of those things is needed. And we've heard, not only from staff, and, and I, and myself and Dr. Sugiyama tonight, that bandwidth is, is a real issue here. If we only have this one pot of money this year, we have to figure out what we think is going to be the most important and have the biggest effect. And that's how I looked at it. Like, what's going to have the biggest effect on, on the student outcome? And that's how I, I went through this list. Not saying that any of those things are, are less important than the next. And I think that as we go through, like you said, we're probably not going to pay the, the science teacher the top dollar. So we can make revisions as we go forward, and we know what's next on our list. But, I don't know, I just, I, I hear your frustration and I just want you to know that it wasn't... You know, I didn't look at it in anything like, ah, that's not important. So it's just, it struggles of like, which one do you put above the other?
So I think we have a pattern, or pat, pattern, a path, correct? You have a, you've outlined a step.
Yeah, so the task for staff by the end of the Monday is to be able to get to you, because the agenda for next Monday has been posted already. That's correct. And have the attachments for the general fund been posted as well? And so what's going to happen is, we're going to have to, probably with the LCAP plan, we'll have to give you a whole brand-new revised version. And with the general fund budget, I talked to Mr. Benet today, and to the extent that the general fund should reflect the funding priorities for LCAP for this coming year with those conditions. And we will frame those in the suggested motion that the board make. So it's a matter of record that there's, to be, the staffs to come back to the board when clarity is reached on those items we talked about. That will give you a RADA sheets on the general fund budget, just for the pages that reflect the changes. So I think the general fund budget document as attached to your board agenda that got posted today is, the only changes will be to those pages. And now, I just want to make sure Dora doesn't, is okay with this, but I think the only change, we'll just give you the sheets that have the changes on them that reflect the proposed expenditures, that you can replace and insert in your budget document. But I think the LCAP changes, I mean, I think, remember Afell's list of suggestions that we received? And we looked at the list and we said, oh, yes, we can make this change, or we can make this adjustment. We're, we're going to go ahead and make those. And then get the plan ready. Try to get it to you Monday, late afternoon, so that you'll have time to look at it Tuesday, Wednesday. And then, but we're going to get it ready in submittable form to the county so that we can submit it to them by June 30.
So the, the question that I, that I had, which I, which I emailed you, and I don't, I don't think you got to, Dr. Suge, it was about the comment, because the, as Mr. Gibb was noting, the, the law requires the superintendent to respond in writing to comments, any written comments from the, the D-LAC in particular, or the parent advisory committee. So it does kind of presume that the parent advisory committee and the D-LAC have been provided an opportunity to understand these decisions and what's in the LCAP and to comment. So how are we going to accomplish that between now and...
So Monday afternoon, after we finish, what we think is maybe the final draft is to send it out to the members. And then usually what Ms. Quadir does is she calls each and every one of them to make sure that they actually check their email, because everyone doesn't necessarily check their email every day. So anytime we've had something, she'll make a phone call, as well as we'll send something out to them. So what they basically have seen is just, is the priorities. And so it's been, I think, what they've been waiting on is what, is basically what will be the top priorities that the board will select, so they can give feedback on that.
Okay, so that, yeah, I mean, I think, I don't know. Any support that you can provide to them to understand, you know, I don't know if you're planning on having a meeting or a conference call or a mass email, or I don't know. But it seems like we, we need to be able to help people understand what, what's in there.
Yeah, I actually, of course, coming into this very late, I had actually the opportunity to sit in for an hour on, that was a D-LAC committee? Parent advisory committee. And there were about, I'd say, six parents there, maybe? And it was an hour before I was due at the city council, for a city council meeting. But I had a chance to sit in for an hour. I actually was pretty impressed with their knowledge of what, of course, they were looking at a long list of potential priorities. I was pretty impressed with their level of understanding regarding the items that were on the list, so. I mean, that was only with the parent advisory committee, not necessarily D, not with D-LAC. But at least for the parents on that committee, I thought, I left there thinking, wow, they really understand what these items are, so.
D-LAC I met separately with the top four officers. And at, and at that parent advisory committee, unfortunately, Mr. Gibb wasn't at that one, that John was at. Because that's what I've been telling them, is that we're waiting for somebody, a superintendent, to sort of come in so they can kind of go through the process and hear that. So that's what John provided. But I guess we can send out an, an email, follow up with a phone call, but I don't know if we can, if there's, what you're asking, to see if we can, can come up with a meeting before Wednesday? Is that...
If they would like, I guess, at a minimum, if, you know, make that offer to them and brief them on it and get their feedback. If they don't feel the need, then I don't want, want to make extra work for you all.
I mean, minimally, we need to respond in writing to any questions, if I understand correctly. But, but we can make that offer, I think, as well for Tuesday.
And then, I guess, since you mentioned the D-LAC, and we, we did prioritize professional development, one of my comments to you was around making sure that we, specifying the LCAP, that we are talking about professional development for English language development and SADI. And that, and that, Mr. Gibb mentioned it again tonight, was a priority for the D-LAC. And the, the issue that I, I didn't, it seems like most of the professional development we're talking about is just general common core for all teachers in English, language arts, and math. And in terms of the actual dollars that you're going to go back and look at and work through on the PD point, can, can we flush out like what the cost of the professional development for SADI will be? And if we can prevent, make sure that, if we can do that and, and tell the D-LAC, this, this is in the plan, it's captured, and here are the costs, I think that would be a great thing.
Yeah, I think will be helpful. So right before school was out, I met with the instructional leadership team at least at Annie Yates. So Ms. Clone was going over the PD plan. And what, what we decided is that EOD and SADI will be a part of writing this year. So it's not everything, it's just a part of writing in Common Core, number one. And then two, Ms. Miller will have a few days in terms of at each staff. So looking through, again, the plan is just not, I mean, when you look at all the Thursdays, there are some Thursdays... there are some Thursdays where it's just one because of all the holidays. So we looked at every Thursday from September until June. And so we plugged her in in terms of like two or three times. So technically, that will be a no cost because of what happened on their Thursdays, unless what Dr. Rubio has, even in the Common Core, basically, I mean, over the, what she's noticed, and a lot of the staff who actually delivers PD, you just don't have enough time in the day. So we've tried the substitutes, we've tried, you know, the Saturdays, we've tried the after-school. And so hopefully, if this model works, we'll be able to add funding to it. But right now, currently, what we have is we just use our Thursdays and our Wednesdays, which is really a no cost. And Ms. Miller will come in and do, and have PD, and also incorporate it when we implement the writing Common Core.
So maybe if we're buying days, the not eight or seven or whatever you can negotiate before... If one of those can be on SADI, for example, then that, that would be great. In addition to the no-cost approach, which is, is really great.
Okay. I think we're clear? All right. And because... So they, they... The district office is closed to the board on Monday. Let's see, and I have an agenda somewhere. All right, so that would then conclude our study session on LCAP, unless there's members of the public that have a comment they'd like to include in there, which is great. All right, so we'll now actually go into closed session and report out following that. Thank you.